...to share our stories within the timeframe. And I want to tell you a little bit background why we come up with these sessions has been efforts for past three years and the host resistance committees. We all knows as pathologists or as well as plant breeders and phenotyping is difficult. And the reason is that we are dealing with a lot of either plant phenotype, not thinking about confronting factor of particular traits you're working on, we're also dealing with environment and we're dealing with environment including changing environment and also changing pathogens. So this disease triangle really poses significant challenging for plant pathologists and plant breeders to precisely capture genetic variations. And DNA sequencing has been common now and 20 years ago, $20 you probably have one kilo by sequences. Today, $40 you got to drop sequences through a GBS. So how can we catch those DNA variations for plant breeding crop protection? It's exciting. However, the bottleneck is really phenotyping. So we're going to have seven speakers to tell their efforts through their very detailed analysis of phenotype in particular host passing systems, but also high throughput phenotyping effort for disease resistance. And I will introduce first speaker and the last speaker and Jim will taking care of rest of speakers because his schedule. So let me get the first one started. So first speaker is Dr. Peter Paus from Canada and he's from a university of Gulf, right? Sorry. And he's talking about molecular aspects, host passing interactions and coming back to your blood. And so welcome.
Okay, well, thank you to the organizers for the opportunity to talk about our work. It's perhaps a bit ironic that I'm going to, the motivation for my talk really is to reduce the phenotyping work that we have in the field. As a plant breeder, we do hundreds of phenotypes evaluations for disease in the field every year. And as has already been mentioned, increasingly that's becoming probably the, an important cost part of the equation. And so if we can have molecular tools that help us along that way, all the better. But I should say that as plant breeders then, in the end, a phenotype is all important and it's never going to disappear as something that needs, needs to be done with the material as you release it for producers. Okay, I'll just use this. So I'm going to be working, I'm going to be talking about common bean and common bean for us is a good model species to work with in genetics. It's, has a small genome. It's not too much bigger than a Rabidopsis. And it's diploid, 11 chromosomes, well behaved genetics. There are two gene pools for Phaziolus, one in Mexico, Miso-American and one in South America called the Andean. The Andeans are the large seeded beans, the Miso are the small seeded beans. Recently, an important resource was added to the bean community and that's a whole genome sequence for G19833 here. That's an Andean bean and so now we, that started the work on a whole genome sequencing then. The phenotyping, we do in a number of ways, but importantly, we do screen material in the field and we, the disease we're looking at here is common bacterial blight caused by Xanthomonas axitopodus or Xanthomonas fuscans. This is usually a mixture and that's a way in which we apply it in the field as well. It's a mixture of field isolates and then it's, we use high pressure sprayers here to injure the leaf and that is the inoculation and we in some cases need to irrigate to keep up the humidity. This is an important disease, endemic throughout the world in some cases. Not only does it cause losses in yield, but also quality of the seed if the, if the lesions are on the pod. We've been working on resistance to this disease for many years and I'm going to be talking about a particular line, OEC Rex. And this line was the progenitor for the lines were made, the crosses were made in the 1980s and the disease resistance was introduced from wild species, Phaziolus acypholius. And it took from 1980 and you can see here where the publication is to describe the first disease resistant variety, OEC Rex in our breeding programs from that cross. Takes a long time for material from exotic sources to move through the breeding program. But this shows then Ontario white bean registration trial in 2015, all of the colored lines are from our breeding programs and oops, you can see that the, those that are highlighted with the green in the back have common bacterial blight resistance coming from those wild intergressions many years back. So at the moment, our goal is not to release a variety that doesn't have common bacterial blight resistance into the, into producers. And so since OEC Rex was the beginning for us in terms of disease resistance, we decided to sequence our own bean genome here and here I'm showing the, the comparison of G19833 here and OEC Rex over here. We have more than a 98% genome and it's highly similar to the one that's published here. It's still fragmented into some scaffolds, but we have made chromosome alignments of, of the sequences that we do have. This just shows you the comparison of G19833 scaffold and OEC Rex assembly here. This is the Illumina sequences that are piled up there. And I'm trying to emphasize here in this comparison, down here is our sequence, OEC Rex and up here the G19833. There are some intergressions down here that seem to be unique to Rex and they have homology to EST sequences from Phaziolus acypholius. And so we think that there is extensive intergression from acypholius into vulgaris, explaining the source of resistance. This is a study by PhD student Fawn Turner. She's looking at a complex cross between two varieties, this one Apex here and Rexeter, both have CBB resistance. They were combined together and then they were top crossed to a susceptible to produce a population of plants and recombinant inbred lines that have been SNP genotyped in this case. So on the top here, we have individual chromosomes and they're color coded so that if the allele comes from the wild progenitor acypholius, then it's red. If it's from the vulgaris, then it's blue. But the point here is to try to convince us that there have been intergressions from the wild that brought across that disease resistance. And this is just a dendogram showing those lines, their relationships and that in the top you see individual lines are grouped without compass, which is a susceptible and they have lower CBB scores. The ones in the bottom are grouped without compass and they have higher CBB score. So the higher the score, the more susceptible it is. Okay, here's another study. Again, what we're trying to do is bring together the power of genetics with phenotyping to try to understand how these two organisms interact. This is a recombinant inbred line population. There are 81 individuals here. They've been field phenotyped for their disease scores and you can see that it is a broad distribution. So this is not a simple gene for gene interaction. It's generally considered to be a quantitative trait, but there are a few loci that contribute to the resistance. So here's a linkage map with that same population. Single nucleotide polymorphisms have defined those chromosomes or linkage groups, as I said, 11 linkage groups for Phaziolus. And this is a QTL study then to identify the loci that contribute to bacterial blight resistance in this population. And you can see again that it is a complex trait. There are a number of different loci on different chromosomes that contribute to the field score that we see at the end. But there's a very large one on chromosome eight, which I'll spend a lot of time now discussing in more detail. And this, oh, this is just a different way of looking at common bacterial blight. This is with, instead of with a structured population, this is a collection of 120 bean varieties across market classes. And this so-called Manhattan plot where you see the sort of large peaks indicate where there are resistant loci in that population as well. And you can see again, it's spread across the chromosomes where we find resistance in this population. We have done some phenotyping to compare phenotyping in the field with phenotyping that you would do in a growth room. And that's important for us to be able to carry on the characterization material in the, in the winter. And in this case, it's, it's image analysis comparison with feel, a visual score. The publication was 2012 here, but the basics are that they, two scores agreed well with each other, which is always great because that's always a concern whether you have something that is actually helping you progress here. But generally the image analysis might be a little bit more precise and helpful for some of these detailed genetic studies. In this case, what we're looking at here is again chromosome eight. Here's a large QTL for disease resistance on chromosome eight at the end of chromosome eight. And here we have different scores, phenotypic scores, both done in the field and in the growth room. And so they're all piling up there and that's good to see that we're, we're scoring for the same thing. And down here you can see the image analysis scores low for those that don't have the markers. So now we're going to shift to a molecular marker that's located in this locus. It's called SU91. It's used fairly extensively for breeding, for bacterial blight resistance in beans. And again, you can see a high value for the, for the disease score and the absence of the marker and the converse, low, low score and the marker is there. So we have the resource now. This is the G19833 genome. It's again an Andean bean. It's susceptible to common bacterial blight. And here's OEC Rex. And on the bottom here, we have the scaffolds that we've constructed from our sequencing effort. And the approach then is to compare the genes in those two regions close to the SU91 marker and look for differences. And we've focused on two types of differences that we found, a NIMEN-PIC transporter gene. I'll talk about that in a moment. And more commonly kind, a more common kind of gene involved in resistance and our gene cluster. I don't know if I can find it. Anyways, down there. So again, when we did the comparison between G19833 and OEC Rex, in this R gene cluster, we found two genes that are unique to OEC Rex. Looks, looks promising. Down here for the NIMEN-PIC, this gene in G19833 is a complete gene, but it's disrupted in OEC Rex. So again, an interesting difference. I'm just going to go back because yeah, this is the QTL for disease resistance and you can see that the R gene cluster here is a little bit outside of that QTL. So initially, we focused on the NIMEN-PIC difference. Again, so here is the comparison of G19833 and OEC Rex and the difference in this region. All the other genes seem to be pretty much the same. NIMEN-PIC, what is it? It's a transporter gene that's found to be involved in pathologies in humans, involved in lipid transport. It's a complicated protein. It has at least 15 transmembrane domains. It has two sterile sensing locations on the protein here and here. Its role in plants is not really understood. The only publication that I could find was related to sphingolipid metabolism in Rabidopsis. This is a recent publication and there are problems with reproduction in those Rabidopsis where that's disrupted. So its connection with disease is not that well known, but there are some reports of plant disease and sphingolipid modifications. So we'll be exploring those in more detail. This is the NIMEN-PIC gene, the domains that are there, the end terminal region that senses sterile, the region that actually binds sterile. And then we're drilling down here now, starting to then, to begin to compare the sequences that we have for G19833 and OEC Rex. Here are the transmembrane domains and as I said, in OEC Rex, this gene is split into two, two genes. It's shown a little more detail there. And graduate student now Emily is, Morno is looking at a molecular marker that's right close to that split so that we can make the connection between the disease resistance and, and the marker more closely. SU91, the marker we currently have is further down and we do have recombinants with that marker. So it's not 100% that that marker is diagnostic for disease resistance. And so a marker closer to the actual gene, if this is the gene for disease resistance is what we're aiming for. Let me shift to the R gene story then. As I said, initially, we were quite excited. There are two unique R genes in this cluster. These are usually lucine-rich repeat nucleotide binding domain proteins that are involved in sensing, sometimes effectors from, from pathogens. And so that seemed promising. However, since then, another sequence has been added to the, another genome, bean genome sequence has been added. And this is BAT93, a Mexican group added this. And it is, OEC Rex is a Miso-American bean, G19833 is an Andean, this is a Miso. And you can see that in fact, there, this BAT93 also has these two extra genes. So maybe it's not. That's the way it goes. You get excited, then you find new information and you keep digging. This just shows the three genes in that cluster. Again, the nucleotide binding region, the lucine-rich repeat. And I want to just emphasize here that although perhaps a whole gene is not a difference, there are differences, nucleotide differences. So for example, here, the OEC Rex gene one here has a polymorphism that's not in either BAT93 or G19833, okay? And it happens to be in a lucine-rich repeat area, which are involved in defining some of the specificities of those interactions. Let me shift a little bit to the Xanthomonas in terms of sequencing here. We usually use a mixture of bacteria to do the phenotyping, field phenotyping. And so they would have both non-fuscans and fuscans bacteria. There was a really nice presentation on Tuesday by Emma O'Leary from University of California Davis, who described a number of sequences from, for, for this sort of bacterial complex. And we've done our own genome sequencing. So what we did here is produce individual isolates, so colony isolates from this mixture. And you can see in this case, for example, this, this is AUDPC in a, in a greenhouse screen. Here is one isolate that's highly virulent and another one that's not. So there is variation in the virulence of the, of the pathogen, not to mention the, perhaps some people would say species variation in, in the, in the group there as well. So we sequenced seven different bacterial isolates and used different, two different approaches to do the sequencing Illumina and PacBio. I won't go into the details there, except we were able to close the genomes for all those seven isolates as well as their plasmids. And you can see that there are differences between fuscans and non-fuscans. And here we have a little bit of a list of the effectors that were found in these various isolates. Most of the effectors were highly similar except these, this group, which is called transcription activation activator-like effectors. And these are interesting proteins that are injected into the plant from the bacteria. They have a very unique sort of structure for the protein, which presents amino acids in pairs at the surface of this protein so that it can bind DNA. So these are proteins that are able to find specific sequences of DNA in, in this case, in the host, in the plant. And so we looked at the tal effectors in this group and the difference that we found was that an aggressive bacterial line had fewer possibilities to recognize the protein, I mean the amino, the nucleotide sequences in the promoter regions of one of these genes in that R gene cluster, okay? So we're thinking perhaps that polymorphisms in these tal effectors might change the interaction between the pathogen and, and affect its disease expression severity. Finally then, I want to just look again at our bean genome. Here's the bean genome that, from OEC Rex compared to itself. So each of these is a separate chromosome, okay? And then we've looked for replications in that genome, in, in the bean genome itself. And so you see down here, SU91 on chromosome eight. Is that right? Yep. And there is a, something on chromosome six and it's labeled with UBC420. UBC420 is another marker that's commonly used for bacterial blight resistance in beans. And so it's really curious that this duplication in the bean genome itself there has in its, in its sequence, markers that are involved in CBB resistance. And so here, I'm just showing back to that QTL study, a number of linkage groups that had QTLs for CBB resistance. And it's interesting that they line up with these areas that are duplicated in the bean genome. And so this final picture here is a, a map of the chromosome eight region against chromosome six and the R gene, the NIMEN-PIC and the SU91 marker. And so there's a diagonal here that we would predict there might be R genes here and in fact, we found R genes there by using that relationship. So the end of it is that there's an interplay between the phenotype and the genotype, both help to try to understand the interaction that's going on between the pathogen and the host in this complex system. And in the end, I just want to acknowledge the funding from various sources, most importantly from the Ontario Bean Growers, who've been long-term supporters of bean breeding and all of its bits and pieces. Thanks.
We have a few minutes for questions and if you have questions, please come to microphones so that they can record your, your questions.
So Jeff, Jeff White from USDA and 12, 12 years of being a physiologist at Seaot. So I'm fascinated. First, a quick clarification or question. You, you called the, the cutifoliis a wild material, but cutifoliis is actually tepray bean. Is this accession, is it a wild accession or is...
Yeah, it was, it was a plant introduction from Seaot. As far as I know, it's not a, it's not a actual cultivated bean itself, that particular, that particular accession.
Yeah, I double check on that because I think most, most of the tepray beans were. So, but the question is on the phenotype, in fact, illustrated very nicely here. So what's, what's the right phenotyping strategy for this? Is this something you can do just by looking at lesions on cotyledons and primary leaves? You know, soak, soak the seeds and away you go?
For phenotyping for the resistance, we usually inoculate, yeah, often we inoculate the primary leaves, if, if it's in the greenhouse. If it's in the field, then as I showed before, we would produce a, a sort of a cluster of plants, usually five or six plants in a hill and then use high pressure sprayer and, and inoculate that way. But, but both, as I said, there, the correlation between a particular line, and that's the other beauty of working in a breeding program. We have fixed lines that we can keep retesting in different environments and, and in different conditions. So in the greenhouse, we would pin inoculate these things and, and generally there's good correlation between those. Yeah.
Have you looked at the expression of this NIMEN-PIC transporter?
No, not yet. That's, that's next. But it's, yeah, it's, it's hard to make the connection there in terms of, but, but yeah, that's our next.
More questions? Do we still have time? Okay. All right. That's one here. Okay, good. We have time.
No one else is going to ask a question. I'm curious about the tal effectors. So are those, do you know if those are on the, the phazioly chromosomes or are those on, on plasmids?
They're both.
They're both?
Yeah, they're in, they're in both locations.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay. What else could you say? Thanks.
All right. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, so do we escape? There we go. Okay. Just double click here.
It's a presentation that we're going to back. Return back. Return.
Okay. There we go.[1765.12]
Okay, so do we escape? There we go. Okay. Just double-click here.
It's a presentation that we got it back. Return back. Return.
Okay. There we go. So we're going to have a complete change of scale here. We're going from the molecular to field scale. And for that, we're going to have Jess Poland of Kansas State University speak about his work with drones and field phenotype.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, the organizers, for the invitation. So we talk about some of the work we're doing in high-throughput phenotyping. All of our work is focused on field-based stuff, so that we can apply it in breeding programs. And this has mostly been focused on kind of physiology and yield predictions. And then we're trying to take this into diseases in barley yellow dwarf, so important viral disease in Kansas wheat, Central Plains wheat. So we're applying it to this patho-system. And so also just my background is I did a graduate work at Cornell and worked on the maize and NAM populations. So that's 5,000 very common inbred lines. And we evaluated these for northern leaf blight. And so it'd take about like four days to, actually, 10 hours a day for four days to score through that population and take a disease rating. So it gave me a lot of motivation over those years to think of something that'd be a higher throughput than days and days of taking visual observations. And so also just to note that, like, when we talk about breeding programs, we usually think about in the scale of thousands and 10,000s. And so we think of ways to effectively score that number of plots and take measurements that way. So the general background in plant breeding then is to think about a pipeline that looks kind of like this. We start at the top with populations and hundreds of thousands of plants that will go through a typical wheat breeding program. And so, for example, in the Kansas program, that'll turn into about 3,000 new entries each year. Most programs will range between 1,000 and 10,000 new entries a year. And then those go through multiple years of testing until at the very end, you come out with one variety. And so it's all a numbers game. And there's a lot of theory in plant breeding. The bigger and more effectively and more accurately we can score through that number of entries, the larger you'll gain and the faster you'll deliver new varieties. And so there's been a lot in this scope of just efficiency in the plant breeding programs. You've got stuff like the split-plot combines that harvests two plots at one time. So you can basically double the number of yield tests that you can do. Planters and automated seed packaging. And all this comes together to be able to put out in the field thousands and thousands of plots. And so, but then when you look at this, and a lot of it's become automated, but the kind of the in-season phenotyping is still very manual. And especially disease phenotyping is completely visual and completely manual. So both relatively slow when we talk about tens of thousands and also a bit subjective, depending on who takes the measurements. So the need for the phenotypes then is we think about it in two ways. And they're basically connected. It's more efficient selection for breeding and then understanding the parts. And so in quantitative genetic sense, the larger the population, the more power you have to detect genetic associations. So we think about this in connecting the genotype to phenotype. And so kind of in this, in this general paradigm of biology, right? We have a genotype that translates through some black box that we try to understand, and that gives a phenotype. And so in quantitative genetics and breeding, what we usually do is observe a whole lot of phenotypes. We observe a lot of genotypes. Then we try and make a correlation between those two. And so that's like association genetics. And then in plant breeding, what we try, oh, and then in the real world, what's happening is those genes are translating into proteins and protein networks and transcription factors that gives this complex that actually turns that genotype into a phenotype. And so in plant breeding then, we try and take that genetic information and predict new breeding lines and predict new phenotypes. So then really, in the world of high-throughput phenotyping though, we're thinking about phenotypes that are easy to measure, that can predict other phenotypes that are more difficult to measure. And so one example here is canopy temperature. For wheat populations that are under heat and drought stress, canopy temperature is actually a really good negative indicator of yield. So a cool canopy that's, for a genotype that's bringing up a lot of water, usually is higher yielding. And so this is like one phenotype that's easy to measure, predicting another one grain yield that's difficult to measure. So this is kind of in the scope of high-throughput phenotyping. If we can put these on platforms that can measure thousands and thousands of plots at a time. So the way we define this is to think about doing this in the field, so we can do this under relevant conditions. We also can do these in conditions that enable population sizes of thousands. We need to be fully or mostly automated for data collection. And so the scale too, you have to think about being actually faster than a breeder can score through plots. And then the analysis has to also be high-throughput. And so a lot of the bottleneck we hit now is that the analysis, we can collect data really fast, but the analysis is slow. And then also that just high resolution isn't necessarily high throughput. So in the scope of, you can measure stuff really accurately, but if you can't scale it to do really big populations, then I don't really consider it high-throughput. So some of the platforms we work on, and I think you hear a lot more about this when Jeff comes, is that we have these phenotyping vehicles, basically like a high clearance vehicle. Most of these are converted, small-plot sprayers. And so the plus side is we carry lots of equipment. We've got onboard power. They're easy to operate, just driving around like a tractor. Downside is it does still take time to get through the field relatively. We can do maybe several hundred or 1,000 plots an hour. So it's definitely faster than going by hand. But it's not as fast as like the drones and the UAVs and stuff. And so the scope of this is what we're doing is we're taking sensor sets and we integrate that with high-precision GPS. And then all the sensor measurements are tagged with a GPS point. And so with that information, we can go back and assign any sensor or imaging. All of the data we collect on these platforms can go back and, based on the field design, we can assign those data within a plot in the field. And so what some of this data look like is then we have latitude, longitude coordinates on the bottom and vertical axis of this. And then on the left, in the green and red are the coordinate positions of the GPS units. So we have two GPS unit on the vehicle. And then there's multiple sets of sensors in between this. And so this was just going at the end of the field, turning around, and then starting back through the field plots. And then the sensors are colored by NDVI, which is a vegetation index. And so the brighter colors that you can see is when you, the low colors are in the bare soil around the outside. And then you can see the colors when you come in here and traverse through the yield plots. And so this is what it would look like then on the scale of an entire field. And so you can see where we traverse back and forth across the field, turning around at the end. And then you can see the row-column design of that field. You can also see some of the spatial variation coming from the top-left corner down to the bottom-right. And here again, this is a vegetation index. So basically a measure of the greenness of the plots. And then you can see plot-to-plot variation. So the way we tail into this data then is these sensors are just continually taking measurements. And so if you zoom in here and you can see the raw data, just continual measurements. Well, based on the survey of the field, we have the plot coordinates. And so we know the GPS coordinates of each field plot. And so we can overlay that with the raw data and then trim out the measurements that are in-between plots. And then within that row-column design of the field, in the bottom there, we can assign each of those hundreds of measurements to an entry in that field. And so with this, you can just continually traverse back and forth across the field, collecting data the whole way. So what this enables is a lot of multi-temporal measurements. So if we can go out and measure thousands per hour rather than like hundreds per day, we can actually take multiple, a lot more measurements throughout the season. And so this is just an example of looking at that same field, transitioning through dates over the growing season. And you can see this is from heading through grain fill and senescence. And so you can see the general trend across the field to lower vegetation index, so basically going into senescence. So also, these can result in like really accurate measurements. So one of the sensors we have on the platform is a sonar sensor. And so this measures displacement from the toolbar to whatever it touches first. So a tall canopy will be a small displacement. And then a shorter canopy will be a long displacement. And so with this, with this sonar sensor, you can measure plant height. And so what we're showing here is just the accuracy of that platform. So in the top two, this is a correlation matrix. So each of these vertical and diagonal are a measurement and then the correlation between the two. So the top two in the left, upper-left corner here are two different measurements from the phenotyper. And so you can see that they're highly accurate across different dates. And then these bottom ones are actual hand measurements. We took a measuring stick, went out in the field and had three different individuals score the same plots. And so you can see that the phenotyper is actually more accurate to itself, taking multiple measurements than any of the, any of the people are actually measuring those plots. So what we come up with is a very, so this is just an example for plant height. This is being validated across many different traits, that we can develop a platform that's much higher throughput and much more accurate than even going out and taking hand measurements. So the other platform we're using a lot too is the UAV. So this is the unmanned aerial vehicle or the drones. And so these are really good. They're becoming very economical, off-the-shelf, commercial stuff. And so we can put near-infrared, so these cameras that will take a vegetation index, so they'll take the same type of data we're getting off of the ground-based platform. And then we can also build digital elevation maps. And this is a way to measure plant height, to measure growth throughout the season. And so what, just an example of what that looks like is this digital elevation model or a map. It's from stereo imaging. So we fly the UAV across the field, take many, many overlapping images. And because these are taken from different angles, just as we can see distance based on our stereo vision, the same thing, you can build an elevation model from those overlapping images coming from different angles. And so with this, we can actually get ground topography. But then as that crop grows, we can actually measure canopy elevations. And so with this, we can measure plant growth and things throughout the season. And so what that looks like is here's some aerial images. These are many hundreds of images that have been stitched together. And this is one of our barley yellow dwarf fields. And so you see all the white points there. Those are ground control points. So we survey those and then we can really accurately reference this into real coordinate space in the real world. And then because of that stereo imaging, we piece those together. And we can build that elevation model and start to extract out both like the vegetation index for these plots and then also the elevation, which is the canopy height. So these are really, I mean, kind of overall real base measurements. We can measure vegetation index and we can measure plant height. But it's a start because with these platforms, we can actually do this on thousands and thousands of plots. And so this kind of is all the background of some of the approaches we've been taking in high-throughput phenotyping. And this kind of gets into how we're trying to use these platforms to work into high-throughput phenotyping for some diseases. So just to note that, like I said, barley yellow dwarf's an important disease in Kansas, especially kind of eastern Central Plains. And this is an aphid-vectored viral disease. And so in the fall and in spring, we'll have aphid populations move in, vectoring and carrying the disease in. And so our experimental design then is to use like kind of a case-control type study. So we have a number of advanced breeding lines. These are coming straight out of the breeding program. We're using this both for just for scoring, for screening in the program, and then also for evaluating the genetics. And so we have two checks. ART is an extremely susceptible. And then Everest is one of the best we have. It's kind of a moderate-resistant variety. And so what we've been doing is we do six replications. And so these are three treated and these are three untreated. And so the treatment includes a seed treatment with Gaucho and then multiple spraying insecticide throughout the whole growing season. So this is like the most uneconomical, unenvironmentally-friendly production practice. But what we try and do is to create environment. We plant them early, the aphids really move in. And then we just try and keep the aphids under control in half of the replications. And those theoretically, then, if they don't have aphids, they're not veccored with the barley yellow dwarf. And so we have a diseased and undiseased plots. And so the reason we're kind of taking this approach is here again, is this would, in going back to the breeding programs, is this would be scalable because we could relatively or theoretically easily scale this up to do hundreds and thousands of breeding lines at some point in the program. So then, like I said, the treatments is the seed treatment and then we have fuller treatments. I just got to note that in 2015, so we've got several years. I just have a little bit of data here from the last two years. Is that in 2015, we actually had like a pretty heavy three pesticide rotation. And then in this year, we thought we could get by with a little easier rotation. And I'll show you, it turns out that you really got to kill those aphids because they just got out of control this year. And we didn't have as much treatment control as we wanted. So then we measure a lot of traits. And normal grain yield, these are full-sized plots. So we harvest them like normal with the combine. We've got some good pathology group that we work with, Doris Rotenberg's group and Anna Whitfield's group, doing both like barley yellow dwarf scoring and actual trapping in aphid counts. And then we measure the high-throughput traits. And in particular, for this study, we're focused on NDVI, which is a normalized difference vegetation index. And so that's basically just a measure of greenness of that canopy. It's a really good indicator of overall plant health, nitrogen status, and a good indicator of diseased leaves. And then plant height, which we can measure, like I said, with a sonar or that digital elevation map. So here's what some of this looks like. So in 2015 and in 2016, we have the treated and untreated plots. And so here again, the treated means that we're keeping the aphids under control. So there's less or should be less disease. And so you can see in the 15, we had about a 50% yield reduction when we had that high barley yellow dwarf pressure. And then in 16, we had just about a 10% to 15% reduction. And so we need to, so live and learn. We need to go back with a much, much more intense spraying regime on these to really keep those aphids under control because it's really like an aphid heaven. And so this is what we're looking at. We're really looking at the differential yield loss between the treated and the untreated. And so conceptually, then here again, this becomes maybe a little different concept in how we think about scoring disease resistance and scoring more so, in this case, tolerance. Because in the end, we're concerned about yield performance under heavy disease pressure. And so what we then look at then, most particularly if we're trying to, like, from a quantitative breeding viewpoint to look at genetic resistance, or in more cases, in more tolerance, there's not really much resistance found in this patho-system, is that we look at that differential response. And so if there's heavy barley yellow dwarf infection, what's the relative yield loss on these things? And so you see here, this is an example, just again, from the 15 nursery where we had much more severe disease pressure. And on the left, we have the treated and then the untreated. And then the vertical axis is plot yield. And so here, you can see that the most resistant variety, Everest, you still have yield loss under barley yellow dwarf. But the relative yield loss, basically the slope of that curve as you compare the two treatments, is much less than ART, which basically suffers more than a 50% yield loss under the heavy barley yellow dwarf. And so in the quantitative, you know, in the genetics world, the quantitative assessment of this is do we have a treatment by entry interaction? So is there a differential response between the varieties, between the treated and untreated replications? And so then what, some of the things we can start to do is actually try and use the high-throughput phenotype data. And so here's my caveat, that this didn't come quite as far along as I had hoped over this year just because our disease kind of got out of control over the year. But we were able to do a little bit of assessment of actually seeing really subtle stunting and yield loss between the treated and untreated replicates. And so this is just an example here, showing on the left is the measurements. This is the whole field again here. And these are color-coded by the canopy height measurement. And so here is the whole field of 700 and some plots on the left and then on the right. And so what we have then is you can see, you can actually see a little bit of the treatment blocks to where the blue colors are lower canopy height and those were the untreated replications. And then the other ones. And so this is actually just a comparison here to show that with the UAV, which is the graph on the right and then the tractor platform on the left, we can give very, very consistent measurements between these two platforms. And so the correlation between those two is like point eight to point nine. So what we see then, then, is if we look at this, we can measure very subtle differences in in, in, in stunting, in the vegetation index and things like this. And so, so this example here, taking that data set and then just comparing the treated and untreated replications is that you, that, and this, this here again, is this is in the fall when the initial infections come in. And we're still not real clear because this was even before we were detecting virus tyler. And so we're, so this is clearly due to some, something to do with the treatment. And we're, we're still not even clear if this is totally due to barley yellow dwarf. But regardless, kind of going back to the breeding scope, is we can measure now very, very subtle differences in treatments, in varieties. And so now we can, we can try and understand what this looks like. But back to this is, is we have the treated and untreated. We have about a, a three to four centimeter difference on average between those treatment blocks. And so here again, this is in the fall. These are just vegetative growth seedlings. And so we can actually start to measure things that by hand measurements would be basically intractable. The challenge we ran into this year, like I said, was just our barley yellow dwarf got out of control. And so we have a, so I don't have this shown here, but throughout the growing season, we had a slight correlation between the vegetation index and the overall sensor measurements. But, and, and it was significantly correlated with, with the barley yellow dwarf treatments. But overall, it wasn't quite to the scope of being predictive on, in the breeding program. So kind of coming to the conclusions on that then is, is that going back and reflecting on what we're, what we're doing in the breeding programs is, is, is we're taking the same type of measurements, not on basically diseased nurseries, but on the breeding plots. And so in that scope, we have data sets with thousands and thousands of plots. And so here again, the big data gives us a lot more power for detect, detecting associations, building prediction models. And so the question is, how do we kind of start to scale up the disease data sets to get to that level? The other is, is, is we're, we're still working on developing experimental designs for the high-throughput phenotyping on the disease assessment. So thinking about, okay, how do we restructure the way we do field-based disease pathology? Even if it, so here again, we're basically doubling and tripling the size of these nurseries. But as long as that doesn't require any type of additional manual labor, it's very scalable. And so in this case, we can redesign kind of the way we do disease phenotyping as long as it's, it's scalable for high-throughput phenotyping. Another thing we're doing, I didn't talk about, we're doing a lot of image-based analysis for different physiological traits. And so, and then you can build these machine vision training sets. And so this needs to be something that has an image and it's paired with a disease rating or a score of some type to train these. So thinking about how do we get 100,000 images of a disease and then pair that with a breeder or a pathologist's score for that plot? And then like I said, we, we're really shifting this to UAV platforms. Because when we want to do 10,000 breeding lines, we need something that will take an hour rather than. Here again, 10,000 plots would still take it, you know, more than days for our tractor. So I just want to stop there and say thanks again. Highlight several in my group, they really contribute a lot to this analysis. Kevin Wang, who's, who's on the, the left picture there, has really been instrumental in building and deploying these, these platforms. And then Daljeet and Tina are doing a lot of the UAV work. And Jared contributed a lot to this analysis. Alan Fritz is the breeder, wheat breeder at K-State, who we work with. And then the pathology groups, Doris and Alma, who's, who's, who's here in the back, I see. And I, I've really been leading the BYD screening. And, and there's, on these same trials, a lot of pathology work going on with, with virus titers and, and trying to quantify that along with aphid counts, which is what Anna, Anna's group and Matt in there. So you can connect with them and, and catch up more on the pathology side with those guys. And this work was supported by Kansas Wheat and Kansas Wheat Alliance. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. We have plenty of time for questions, so if anybody would like to start off the questions.
So, so Jesse, if I take a step back and think about sort of how, how I'd approached working with, with viral diseases. I think some, you know, the yellow suggests that there's some spectral characteristics there. So if you, you know, if you were, if, if you weren't in a rush to do it, to do a thousand plots and you said maybe let's do 20 or 30 plots and really figure out what's going on. What do you think would happen if you looked at hyperspectral and picked out specific wavelengths? Would you see a thermal signature long before you saw something affecting the, the foliage? And I think morphology would probably be the last because by the time you got morphology, you've got a, a full-grown epidemic.
Yes, and that's, that's, that's for sure, good point, Jeff. So where we're going next is to actually, because, just because with our current platform, that's what we can measure. But adding on the hyperspectral on this is, you can pick out different indices that would likely be more predictive of like the actual BYD severity.
Yeah, this is really cool. I can't, I, oops. I can't wait until we don't have to look at every single plant. But would it help to use a virus that's not insect transmitted where you get?
Oh yeah, that, this is like the worst patho system. Alma can like agree, right? This is the worst patho system to work on because there's like five different aphid vectors and the whole, it's actually yellow dwarf complex and.
Yeah, I understand it's an interesting disease, but it's not the easiest one for you.
No, this is in, yeah, this is probably the worst one to start on. But it's, you know, like a billion-dollar disease in Kansas. So we work on what's relevant too. It's, it's a balance of what's easy and what's relevant, so. Yeah, and we, we have growers funding this, so they'd, they'd rather us work on something relevant than something easy.
So what is a really challenging part of these efforts using high-throughput phenotyping? What, what is the battle like?
Oh, the real challenging effort is like on a data analysis and pipelines. Because o- over the last many years, our group and other, mostly other groups have gotten really good at data collecting, right? So we can routinely go out, collect massive amounts of data. But then like really working through the analysis and like digging into what it means. And then being able to do that on a iterative cycle that's fast enough to like understand what you did, make adjustments and then do something better the next field season is, is a real challenge, so.
Cost is not concern?
It's all relative. I think especially on the UAVs, I mean, we're talking about five to $10,000 platforms. And so relative to the, you know, relative to the cost of two post-docs and a graduate student to like fly the thing and analyze the data, it's, it's pretty cheap, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I should back up and just say, on the, you know, starting with easy diseases or easy, you know, we work on the, you know, the physiology and the nitrogen. And those are sort of the easy traits for high-throughput phenotyping. And we've done a lot of validation in Jeff's group and on, on that. And so kind of forgetting the platforms working, that's the easy traits.
Good. Does anybody else have a question?
I'm wondering about the scale. In a breeding program, yes, you have plots where, you know, you, you can put lots of plants into one plot. I'm, was wondering about the value of doing this at a single plant level.
Yeah, so I think that's really like the ultimate goal too. So what, that's kind of like version 3.0 probably, is to be able to, is be able to take measurements on a single plant basis on space planted in the field. I think the platforms are definitely capable. For sure, the resolution, both on the UAV and the tractor platforms, the resolution is high enough to do single plants like on a one-foot grid. Just a question is, is, is the analytics to, to actually go through that data and make sense of it? We struggle enough with, you know, experiments of a thousand plots, right? So, yeah.
Do you fly your own drones?
Yes and no. I, I generally don't get much, it's usually the graduate students out there having fun.
Okay, because some of the, I was going to ask if the changes in, in the legislation have actually made a difference in what you can do.
Yeah, no, this is going to make things much easier, kind of the new UAV regulations that are coming through. And we've actually got a new technician on our team who's a pilot. And, and so the, yeah, the things you never imagined adding to your research group. But, but a lot of this, yeah, is, is dealing with the regulations and, and making sure our platforms comply with, with the rules.
I think we'll have to keep moving here. Jeff will be available. If we give him a hand, thanks for his presentation. Well, we're going to move into a little more complex system. We've been looking at foliar disease. Now we're going to look at a disease that has a level of complexity that's probably, makes it much more difficult to deal with using the techniques that we've just talked about. And that will be addressed by Sylvia Cianzio of Iowa State University. And she's going to talk about phenotyping and assessment with sudden death syndrome of soybeans, which is both a foliar and a root problem.
Thank you, Jim, and good afternoon. My name is Sylvia Cianzio. And I have to tell you, I'm a soybean breeder. But I have the privilege to work with a wonderful group of plant pathologists. And so I think we are doing good work, or we think so anyway. So I'm going to be talking, I'm going to use this to change that. I'm going to be talking what we are trying to do in order to put together the phenotype and the molecular aspects of different diseases. And why is that we do this? In, in the manner that we work, we have two perspectives. The, the breeder's perspective and the plant pathologist's perspective. And then we have to consider some fundamental concepts and equations. And I'm going to use then two examples from soybeans. One for a very simple example, and then compared to where we are at with sudden death syndrome. From a breeder's perspective then, what we always want when we are looking at a phenotype is a very clear differentiation between what it is, resistant and susceptible. And then definitely as breathers, we can't afford to have misclassifications. We also need to have repeatability in, in anything that we are observing. And the screening time has to be short. And then definitely we need an accurate phenotyping because we do want to have accurate molecular markers. And of course, and in the ideal world, we don't want to have any negative association between the resistant genes and the agronomic traits that are the basis for commercial production. The pathologists look at this conundrum in, in a slightly different way. And the best way to put it up is put in the, the disease triangle. So we do have the pathogen. And then for us, we need to know if there are biotypes, different isolates, if it is sexually or sexually transmitted, what's the mutation rate? And then from the host side, for all of us, for, for pathologists and breathers, then we do need to know if the resistance is simple, complex, if, if there is a clear expression of the resistance. And then definitely we do have the environment acting upon both the host and the pathogen, and then the interactions of them. So from a fundamental concept is the first equation that is extremely important to both, to pathologists and to breathers. And it is that each phenotype is a final expression of the sum of a genotype, the environment, and then the interactions. And so we have the, let's see. So we have that same equation in the triangle, in the disease triangle. And then we also have it when we have our field trials and then when our farmers plant everything. So a second fundamental concept, and this is mostly for breathers, comes from what we need to do. And it is to have genetic gain on our cycles. And then we need to consider time. And just to have an idea, what I'm talking, when I'm saying a genetic gain is that when we, in year one, we release one cultivar that is susceptible. Then in year two, we want to release another cultivar that it is superior in resistance to the one that we released before. So that is a measure of our genetic gain. And then the problem with time is that, because when you see the, the scheme similar to the scheme that our previous speaker presented, it usually takes us from the time in breeding, we form and develop the populations, until we go all the stages in breeding up to the final release, an approximately time of seven to nine years. So then time for us, it's really of essence. We can't afford to make mistakes throughout the period. So to this complexity then that we need to address, we add something else. And it is that we assess the, the disease as, by visual symptoms. And then in the visual symptoms, we have two components that are extremely complicated. One, they are usually finite scales, and then they are subjective. How do we cope with this? All of us, breathers and pathologists, we work under control conditions. We increase the number of replications and we do multiple runs. And then we really rely on the comparison between susceptible controls and resistant controls. Because that's going to give us a measure of how well our repeated environments are behaving. And then something that was previously said also for the, by the other speakers, we always, and we will never go away from the field trials. Because we are releasing material that the farmers are going to be planting. So then our final confirmation is going to be done in the field. So just to exemplify how we are dealing with two completely different systems. I'm going to talk first about Phytoftra root rot and for soybeans. And, and in this case, I'm only going to touch on the major genes that we do have. And so for Phytoftra and having the major gene resistance, we do have a clear reaction. We have a clear field expression. We know the isolates, they are very well characterized. We have the screening methods in place. And then we also have the genotypic controls that allow us to compare between resistance and susceptibles. Therefore, this is an ideal system for us in the sense that we can extrapolate from the control conditions, whatever we find for resistance, into the field conditions. So a pertinent question then is, can we use molecular markers for resistance to, for Phytoftra root rot? And what is that we know? We do know quite well, most of the resistant genes, the major resistant genes that are present in the, in soybeans. And then we also know the virulence genes that are present in the pathogen. So then can we use markers? Yes, most definitely. In a system like this, the markers are practical. They are now, not at the beginning, but now a lot less expensive at times at the screening, in, in the, the traditional screening. And they are less time-consuming in terms of identifying the resistant lines versus the susceptible lines. So therefore, that is really an ideal system for bringing together the phenotype and the genotype. What happens now then in a completely different disease, which is sudden death syndrome? What is that we do know of sudden death syndrome in soybeans? It is a truly quantitative trait. We so far have identified more than 58 different QTLs. And to make matters worse, then we do have, the organism is a Fusarium virgiliiformis, soil-borne invasive root, but it causes root rot that we normally don't see at field experiments. And then it produces a toxin that moves into the foliage. And then we do have foliar symptoms. And then like our previous speaker mentioned, it is a disease of major economic importance. So the picture is ready for us to do something as breathers and pathologists. So how are we doing right now in dealing with this kind of a system that it is so complicated? We do have in place some screening protocols that are quite well established, and we are using them. We also do screening on field conditions. And then by, for that, we do artificial inoculations. And then we also apply irrigation because that favors the development of the disease. And then as before, for. And then, as before, for Phytophtrum, here, we also have large number of replications and then repeated experiments across different environments. How are we doing in using this method that in a way, it's quite crude, you know, in terms of breeding? I think we are doing quite well so far. Iowa State has released two resistant germplasm lines to SDS in the early maturity groups. We are going to release more in 2016. However, our farmers need increase, need, they have a need for us to increase their resistance to this disease because we do have the environmental component that makes us so unpredictable. But then, we do have a major constraint. And it is that, and this is preliminary data, but still is very revealing, that when we try to correlate what the disease results that we have under control conditions and then in the field, and also in the field in different years and different locations, the repeatability of where we have, oh, I cannot put my, it's very low, point thirty-three. So this is preliminary data. However, it is very indicative of the problems that we are facing. So then, can we use molecular markers in order to select for resistance? We do have markers for each of the QTLs that we have identified. And so in theory, we could. But what are the concerns with these markers? First of all, by having 58 or more QTLs, then, how many QTLs are we going to be using? And how many markers? And that is because right now, we still don't know what is the QTL contribution of each QTL into the final expression of resistance. And that is in part also because some of the markers are population dependent. So then, when we make a cross in order to try to bring together all the traits that we want to, then some of those markers are not going to be validated in the new population. So what are we doing in the meantime? We continue to work with the tools that we have. But what are we doing in the meantime? We are actively doing research on some different aspects. We have adjusted the protocol, the classical protocol that it was designed for big differences between resistance and susceptible. We adjusted it in such a way now that we have higher concentrations of the inoculum. And then this allows us a better differentiation between what it is a susceptible cultivar and then a resistant or intermediately resistant cultivar. And that also allows us, when we are working with recombinant inbred lines, to pinpoint small differences between the recombinant inbred lines having different QTLs. So we feel that we are, in that part, we are moving in the right direction. What else are we trying to do? We are trying to modify our visual symptom scale. A scale from one to seven cannot be adjusted or used when you do have so many different QTLs. And there is no way that you're going to be able to come up with some sort of a selection index in order to make the best selections on your population. So then, we are trying to expand the scale, always if I need, of course, because it's going to go from zero to completely diseased, 100. But still, it's going to have a larger spectrum. Then we are taking, we are going to start, we are already taking pictures. And then we are putting together the pictures, the pixels, different pixels, in order to get better resolution. And then using software to interpret if we can really make the scale more objective and more precise. And also thinking, you know, that with those kinds of tools, similar to what our previous speaker was saying, we can identify small differences that at the naked eye, we cannot see. So then, remember, this is a disease that acts at two different levels. It acts at the root level, and it produces a terrible root rot. And then it also acts at the foliar level. So then, when we are working in the screening, in the control conditions, we need to be using some cultural medias that allow us to pull the plants cleanly, get the roots out with no damage, and then be able to characterize the rot in those roots and all the root traits measured in such a manner that then we can apportion the different root traits with the different QTLs. So those are some of the areas that we are moving into working. And then, and we have other things that we are already talking and to do and also. So why is that we are moving into that direction? First, definitely, with having so many QTLs, we need to find small differences, really, in order to associate those small differences with a corresponding QTL. We need to do that because in breeding, it's almost impossible, with the population sizes that we can manage, to put together 58 different QTLs, maybe 50 different genes, once we have the genes identified in the QTLs. And so by doing, by identifying those small differences, then we are going to be able to define which of the QTLs we can concentrate. And then on that basis, how many? And then we can calculate the population sizes that we are going to have to use. And also, because we need really to determine if we do have QTLs that are only for foliar symptoms, QTLs that are only for root symptoms, and also QTLs that are useful for both. We have right now the three categories. But we still are not fully convinced if we are dealing with two different resistance mechanisms, mechanism, one for the leaves and one for the roots. So the relevant concepts on this work is that we do need reliability and repeatability. And then we are constrained by time. And so that brings other thoughts into play, you know. Do we need to wait, really, for the symptoms to express, to make selections? I don't think so. I think that if we can start pinpointing the minute differences that we cannot see at the naked eye, maybe we are going to be able to short the screening period, and then we can select prior symptom expression. So if we could select on the basis of precursors, RNA sequencing, transcriptomics, anything that can help us to save time. So that's really where we are at right now. And then I only want to acknowledge everybody that is working together, that we are working together at this, the Leander's Lab and all her personnel, but the Charia's Lab and my own lab. And then all the sources of funding that so far have provided adequate funding to do all this work. And we hope they continue. So thank you very much.
There's time for a couple of questions. Does anybody have a question for Sylvia? So you were talking about some method of assessing disease before the symptoms are really visible. Have you considered, say, hyperspectral analysis or some sort of radiometric analysis?
Yes, I really feel that we have to move into that direction. And I think we need to plan for research on that direction. Because if we can identify the symptoms way before they are being shown on the plant, both in the field and in the control conditions, then we are going to be better off.
So that would speed up the process?
Absolutely.
Does anybody else have a question? Good.
Could you please elaborate on using winriso for measuring root rates?
Could you repeat the question?
Could you please elaborate on using winriso for root rate measurements?
Yes, yes. We've been using the winriso, particularly for Phytophtrum, to measure a number of the traits length, weight distribution in the soil. And so we would like to do the same thing for SDS. Because we also think that there is an association between root growth, root resistance or susceptibility, and drought tolerance. So if we could, you know, not only in the control environment, to measure different water, I mean, different irrigation in terms of water, and then the water distribution in the soil, then see how the roots are reacting, then I think we would have a better grasp of what is implied on the root resistance trait. Because we have observed also that, and these are very crude observations, of course, but we have observed that some roots are able, in spite of being rotted, they are able to grow, continue growing. So if that is a case, then that would imply some sort of a tolerance mechanism that would help the plant to cope with this parasite. And this Fusarium also has another very intriguing characteristic. It's soil borne, and it is clonal, there are no sexual transmissions in the U.S. But however, the plant has so many QTLs to cope with it. So there must be something else related to the Fusarium in itself that provokes the plant, in a way, to generate so many different mechanisms of defense. So we think that by going aggressively after the root distribution, shape, weight, length, then maybe we can find some explanations that would really help.
Okay, well, thank you, Sylvia.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jeff White, who is from USDA. USDA, Maricopa, Arizona.
Okay, so good afternoon. It's a pleasure to be here and provide a little bit of an overview of our work. This will follow on. Jesse provided a very nice introduction for me. Yeah, I guess I should figure out, this is the magic wand, right?
You're probably better off using the pointer on here.
Oh, okay.
It doesn't record with.
Ah, perfect. Okay, so I'll just stay with this guy. So I'll be talking about work that we're doing in Maricopa, Arizona. But I want to emphasize that this is very much a team work, and it's growing rapidly. We have our own group with USDA. We're co-located with people at the University of Arizona. Jesse's crew has interacted a lot with us. I have a bean effort with Jonathan Lynch and Jimmy Burridge at Penn State. We work with Cornell, the Danforth Plant Center and beyond. And I also want to put up an advertisement. I'm surprised Jesse didn't sneak this in here. Courtesy of the National Science Foundation, who I know some people think only want to deal with the rabbitopsis and totally impractical, you know, science, they've actually funded now two field phenomics workshops, both of which were way oversubscribed. We just advertised the next one, which will be the 17th, the 20th of October. And I understand that that one is also way oversubscribed. But bear with us, we're trying to do three more workshops. And this is sort of, you know, start from why phenotyping through, these are the different tractor systems. And I think for the first time this year, we'll have some material on UAVs as well. And you can try and text Jesse or myself if you want more information. I'll just start with a really simple example. I'm one of those people who likes to walk before we run too fast. So this is a little bicycle cart that we developed. It's got infrared thermometers. There are actually two cameras up there, but I'll just show the data from the infrared thermometers. We can do about 180, I think these were four meter long plots, in about an hour. We're recording at five hertz, so that's about two to three points, data points, per meter of row space. And let's take a look here. So this was a sort of interesting experiment, not, you know, not scaled up for breeding. But this is a gradient. We had a moisture gradient. There's a linear move irrigation system. And see, I guess we get a, oh, there it is. Okay, so the linear move ran down the middle. We had high water in the middle and a gradient going down to almost no water at the ends. And we had, in this case, barley's and wheat's to one side, and camelina and oilseed in Nebraska casey on the other side. And so in this case, we sort of divide it up into six water levels as we go. So this is just to show you the resolution of what you can get with that simple cart system. Obviously, so we're out at the dry edge, you get high temperatures, where you get bare soil, and it starts to come down. And I apologize, this is in Fahrenheit because it was set up for, to show to local wheat people, wheat producers. But even like this variation here, we're pretty sure some of this is wheel tracks from compaction, from the vehicles that were in the field to prepare. So I'd say that's the kind of variation that you can pick up with just a simple cart system. And, you know, it could be, like I say, six levels of water. Or we could have chopped it up into much smaller plots and fit in a lot, lot more. And of course, repeats going out with that. The camelina. Teppery beans, Phasiolus acutifolius. This is Jonathan Lynch and his graduate students' effort. This is Wilcox, Arizona. And so this is a field, so replicated design. It's a funny shape because they had to stick it into a central pivot irrigation system. But of course, this should have been uniform. And one of the things that I think both Jesse and I are scratching our heads over, in fact, I was going to ask him about some of the within-field variation you can see. You know, this should be uniform, but clearly, the blue here is cool, so we're getting water, I think, running from one part of the plots or the experiment to the others. It's just sort of zooming, zooming in on it, so like the bright spots are going, or the bright reds, I suppose shows better here, is the walkway, and then we're looking at the plots. Then by combining it with the height information, right away, we can say, well, all of the low height, that's bare ground, so let's take those out. And now our problem is what to do with these data. And somebody asked about the bottleneck, figuring out how to deal with the data is the next big challenge for us. Another example, if you want to go with something even simpler, Maria Newcom is working, whereas shown here, doing just simple canopy cover estimates. And we take a digital camera mounted on a frame, so we get a standard height. We use a bubble level so that we have the same angle, so we're not getting sort of a keyhole effect. We put a shutter release here, so you don't have to reach up and grab the camera. And you get these nice pictures. And then with a very simple image J routine, we can estimate percent cover. And these are changes, this is plants per meter squared, because we did have some unfortunate and undesired variation in populations in this experiment. And then canopy cover, so this is the 3rd of March. And this correlation between the 15th of March and the 3rd of March. And I think the other, you know, the other graphs, then, are just a time series. So we start out, it's all scaled to 100% canopy cover, so low, but, and again, with population and getting higher until we get up to 15th of April, where it pretty much stabilized. So if you want to start real low budget and you're high throughput phenotyping, this is still something, I think we figured we can do, you know, between 100 and 200 plots per hour on this, the processing with the computer takes less than an hour. So very doable. So that's just to show you, yes, this works, and that you can do it with simple things. I wanted to remind us, okay, we're all excited, we have a new tool, we say it's so much better. What does it really mean? Of course, one expectation is, you know, if time is money, okay, well, maybe conventional phenotyping has a lower base cost, but we're hoping that by investing more, we can phenotyping has a lower base cost, but we're hoping that by investing more, we can get to a point where we're getting higher heritabilities in our data as we put more money into it. We also might get more loci per trait, so that's sort of what I show here, so you put in more money, you pick up more loci with a conventional approach, and we're hoping we're getting sort of this breakthrough with HTP. I think this actually, to me, is maybe one of the most exciting things, is we can just look at traits that we've never dreamed of, we can look at time scales and spatial scales that have been impossible to consider. And with this, I'm hoping we'll be able to get to biologically much more fundamental traits, much, much faster, and say, by getting a grip on spatial variability, we can try and bring down our G by E. I'm not so excited about people who come and say, well, what trait has got the best correlation with yield? I'm not sure at this stage, we're just looking for better ways to measure yield, you know, Jesse has some beautiful combines that are probably better for measuring yield. And I do think, you know, there's potential, although it may not look like at the moment, lower cost through automation, and much faster turnaround through automation. Just sort of, I guess, to remind you then, that the systems we're working with, we have sensors to measure the traits, we integrate this with GPS and data logging and some pre-processing. We need vehicles to go through, you know, carry our system over the field, and then the analysis. And I, somewhere along the way, I noticed SIVA, that's Spanish for it goes, so it works, yeah. Okay, so I just thought I'd drill in a little bit on the vehicles, because I know that's a hot topic for people. We've got a lot of options going on, and ranging from our, you know, $100 hand cart, our 15, to $100,000 high clearance tractor, gantry cranes, helicopters, which we have used in agronomy studies in Maricopa, and aerostats, and now UAVs. And so I won't go through all of these, but obviously, you want to think, is this a proven technology? Are we on the bleeding edge where we need engineers to make this work, and we're going to keep going back to the shop? Can we operate at 24/7? And I can, I'll show our gantry system. Turns out, being able to do 24/7 is really important with our new gantry system. You know, what kind of payload are we looking at? What's the capital cost, operating cost? Oh, and good, we've got pathologists in the room, is it safe for crops? And I worked with beans, and one thing that I learned going through fields of beans, is if it's just rained and you're thrashing around, suddenly, you have enough xanthemonas that you don't have a physiology study. And I just look at these tractors going through, and I say, this is an invitation for disaster. So is it safe? And also, obviously, soil compaction and other things. Some sort of, just to give you an idea, sort of out of the box, and we know UAVs have a lot of issues, one thing, or one approach that might relieve some of the problems is to have a tethered UAV, so you don't need a battery pack, you transmit the data down through the same thing, and it can't fly away, it can still fall on somebody. And so the latest check, the FAA still, in its benevolent perspective on how to stimulate novel research techniques, it still says that the tethered UAVs are being classified with the rest of them. And we can come back to sort of thoughts on ways to get UAVs going. I am especially excited about gantry types, type systems, where you put in rails or some sort of track and go up and down the field, but keep wheels out of the plots, you can do it 24/7. I'm hoping we can have operators who don't even need the expertise to drive a farm vehicle or to fly a UAV. You don't need GPS, which can bring down some of the costs, can carry high payloads, you can expand it fairly easily just by adding more rails. So I think I have my little, yeah, there goes my little animation, there goes my gantry down instead of rails, a side set of rails to carry it over, and boom. So I haven't put this into the field, but we think that a light duty gantry could really help us. And in some sense, it's a mature technology, because they use gantries, obviously, in factories and port areas and so on. Some quick examples, we had a sort of a gantry built on a linear move irrigation system back in 1999, that could resolve about one meter plots and had reflectant sensors and infrared thermometry on it. The French have eight gantry cranes in service, I think this is for maize and wheat, and sort of a medium duty gantry system. And then there's a project that is just getting cranked up in our field this year. And this is the TERRAF project funded by ARPE, and they like big science. ARPE is sort of modeled on DARPA, which brought us the internet. And so their idea is, if you make a big enough investment, you can transform science. A couple of examples we use might be the Cyclotron, you know, developed in California, the Hubble Space Telescope. And so we're hoping this may become our new trailblazing effort. And I should emphasize, this is being led by Todd Mockler at the Danforth Center, and it's a very large collaboration. I'll show you a little bit of what's going on, so you can imagine, it's this gantry on rails, goes north-south, then has an instrument box that moves east-west and can go, obviously, up and down. It can go, I think, about seven meters high if it needs to. At the moment, it's got a pair of 3D laser scanners, these are not LiDAR, but that gives a 3D structure, thermal camera, stereo RGB, two hyperspectral cameras, and together, they're going to produce every, sort of every image it generates will have essentially, if you think of each waveband, there are two nanometer wavebands from essentially 500 to 2,500 nanometers. So that's basically 1,000 photos every time you click the shutter button. So again, the data's an interesting issue. And the fluorescence, there's a fluorescence camera stuck in here, so just again, looking up at the box, you can't, you won't be able to see all of it, there's the infrared camera. I think that's one of the laser scanners, that's part of the stereo visual. And this box is about two meters by three meters, and there's discussions about how much it weighs, but two to four tons is the very good ballpark. Again, looking at these a different way, they can be used in different modes, some of them can be used continuous scanning, some of them top-go, or stop-and-go. The duration to the scans, we're still working with this, but unfortunately, it's still slow enough, we can't just like zip down the field, we're looking 10 hours, six hours. I think we have one scan down to about three hours by not trying to do the whole field, you know, if you eliminate walkways and so on, you can speed things up. Another big issue is the amount of data this puts out. So this is gigabytes here, so we're talking somewhere from eight to 30 terabytes for a scan, where we used both the, what is it, the near-infrared and the shortwave infrared hyperspectral cameras. So we're not going to be doing the whole field with these till we're sure that we know what we're going to do with the data. And I think what we're, we were budgeted for a petabyte of data, so what's that? That's 1,000 terabytes, is that right? And we got a cost, I mean, he said, well, geez, we've got so much data, maybe we should just double the capacity, and the bill came back a million dollars. So it does become an issue. But does it work? Yes, it does. And I just got this yesterday, because I should say, we just pulled the first sorghum crop. So this is height done with the two laser scanners, which are not LiDAR. And you know, with, oh, there we go. So it's scanning east-west, in this case, we're just looking at essentially three rows of sorghum, you know, one, two, and three. They're color-coded by height, the reference is zero here somewhere in midair, so I, since I just got this, I don't quite know how to interpret this, but we are resolving height, and I presume this is bare soil over here. So what makes this interesting is the accuracy. We're talking one millimeter accuracy in XYZ, so one millimeter cube. In fact, it's actually supposed to be slightly better, I think, in the XY direction. And it can be operated at night, it's a narrow waveband that's outside of what you'd expect to affect plants. And here's a close-up then, of some of the data coming off it, so out of a single row, some of the leaves, and this, so this is one of our big questions, could we do leaf size, can we do leaf angle? And the answer is apparently yes. And again, I don't know how, fully how to interpret this, but the color coding indicates differences in leaf angle, and this just came in yesterday. I want to say special thanks to Robert Pless at Washington University in St. Louis, who's our image processing guru on the project. So now we have another kind of problem. We're getting temperatures up, well, say, 45 Celsius higher, and beginning to see some funny things like this leaf desiccation or scalding. And since we're mostly agronomists and physiologists, we say, well, it's so hot that we're just in really high transpiration demand, we're just stressing the plants out, and they can't take it. And we could detect this with infrared imaging very nicely, you know, picking up these dead or dying leaves. But I got to thinking about it, and say, well, Abraham Blum in Israel is a real expert on sorghum stress physiology, so I asked him about it. And so guess what? This is the beginning of a typical scattered soil disease or soil pest problem, fusarium, nematode, soil grubs, et cetera. Progression of symptoms over two dates, to support my guess. Have a plant pathologist and entomologist check soil and roots around the most symptomized plants. So we pulled up some plants, and we are seeing, I don't know if it shows up well. Let's see. I think it's better, it's better there than it is here. I think you could see there is some reddening on some of the roots, and I didn't have a good control picture, but this sort of reddening pattern in the stem is, looks very much like there's something not good going on. And Barry Pryor, our U of A plant pathologist, took samples, and he sent me an email this morning, saying that there's definitely fusarium there. So the good news is, we have a phenotyping system that can detect, you may be able to detect fusarium problems. The bad news is, we're talking about doing two rotations of sorghum a year, and with wheat in the winter for a short break crop, we have no options with this large steel infrastructure to move it somewhere so that we don't have problems with soil pathogen buildup. So I'm wondering if we're going to be recruiting more and more pathologists to participate in this project than we intended. I wanted to bring this up as I close out, this was a survey, I think it's the second time the International Plant Phenotyping Network has circulated a survey, and so they ask about, you know, what crops, what plant groups, and what traits. So I hope we can see this. Down here at the bottom, so what are key plant traits? Well, agronomy, water status, shoot growth. You have to get right down here to others to get biotic, post-harvest, and forestry. I didn't even know forestry was a trait in FIDSOBIAN. So you're down there with the trees. So I'll give you a little bit of my field phenomics wisdom. Always use the right tool for the job. You know, it's really exciting, it's great to get out there and work with engineers and so on that you haven't, but stop and think about, is this the right tool? So this is like, should we be using NDVI for looking at something that maybe has a really strong thermal signature? Walk before you run. I think our gantry is going to test that hypothesis, because ARPE wants to go from essentially concept to prototype commercial products in three years, and that's a bit of a challenge. What you see is what you get, and I was thinking about the xanthemonas, because we went to the Wilcox site in Arizona, thinking we were going to take images and score, and the trouble is with the xanthemonas we had there is that the leaves, there were infections like in the primary leaves or the first trifoliat, but the plant sort of grew out of it. And we could see the plants were diseased, but you couldn't see it. So if you can't see it, you're not going to do anything. In the dark, all cats is gray, as Jesse has wonderfully shown, if you don't have differences in your treatments, because you can't manage your treatments for some reason, everything's going to look the same. Whatsoever a man soweth, that shall he also reap. Again, what we're going to see with our sorghum is our results are no better than our agronomy, and I think we're still challenged. And then, of course, through the whole thing, you know, the good God is in the detail. I always used to say the devil, or what is it, the devil is in the details, but one way or another, if you don't track the details, these things are going to not return quite as much excitement as we're looking forward to. Thank you.
I think we have time for one question from here.
Monsanto indicated they were using a rover to evaluate their plots. Any of your platforms similar to what Monsanto is using, do you know?
A rover in the sense of something, a robotic vehicle. The ARPE project has a rover in there, so I say, I should have gone into more detail, the ARPE is a bioenergy sorghum system, and so I think one of the ideas is, can you get in there and look at the size of the stems by sending something through underneath? If I were asked to do, I'd say, let's have a gantry and put an arm down underneath, but there are a lot of options. Well, actually, Jesse's worked a bit with a rover as well, you've got robotic vehicles in the view. Time for two-second response?
Yeah, but what's your opinion on that versus, say, a UAV?
It was like act.
Yeah, in my opinion, it's a general accuracy versus throughput. So the rovers are the, can be super accurate, because they go nice and slow, and you can program them to go through the field, but the UAV, we can do, it's basically 10 or 100 times faster.
And again, it goes back to field design, if you've got enough space. Are you comfortable leaving a big enough walkway for a rover, or have you got a rover that's small enough that could go under some? You know, it's, Mr. Natural says, always use the right tool for the job. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. We're running a bit behind. Let's take a 10-minute break, and come back here at 2:55.
Height, as I said, is the soil pathogens. If a taller, if plants are taller, that may be destructive for grain. And a plant type, if your plant type can avoid formulation of humidities, that will reduce the disease symptoms. And because there are grains, although we consider heading date, is also another confronting factors. And when the plant breeders or the geneticists working on wide range of germ plasms, differently, they have all different plant architectures and also different agronomy traits. So besides what we normally think about confronting factors of phenotyping for resistant to shisplite and agronomy traits already gave us significant challenges. So I'm gonna just since only fifteen minutes, I already took, using two minutes already. I will just touch in there, you highlight a few efforts and of this how we talk on this very challenging rice diseases. First, we're looking at pathogens, looking their genetic makeups and also looking at variants. And during this effort, we are developing their phenotyping methods. We continue still improve our methods with idea to be able capture the minor QTLs. Sometime, we hope to identify this candidate genes and underlying their major QTLs. And by doing so, we have to, we have mapping a quite a few very adopted QTLs in Southern United States. And thereafter, we are able to identify a few candidate genes. And we perform a functional analysis, try to further define the genetic markers from these candidate genes for marker-assisted breeding. Sometime, we also identified germ plasms from a worldwide connections with ideas to have a very strong resistance for breeding worldwide. And finally, I will show you a little bit of our innovative thinking, innovative methods, and how they have been help us to evaluate shisplite resistant. And the results were verified by replicate field plot experiment in couple of years. So starting from two thousand one, sixteen years ago, first postdoc, Yashi, when Yashi was able to connect about two hundred shisplite isolates from Southern US, mainly in Arkansas. So we performed DNA analysis using our DNA ATS sequences and also using tester, certain testers determining their passing isolates caused shisplites AGYAA. Now later on, our postdoc, Pratipasane, was able to develop a very interesting inoculation methods, rely on agros plot, growing on PDA and put into touch leaf. This method is able to allow us to isolate messenger and reproducibly. And as you can see here, we, we have a few isolates here, I want to show you, like RG zero one, zero two, and RG zero one twenty, twenty-eight, RR zero one two, two nine reverse controls. You see a different pathotypes reflect different extent of their disease reactions. And this is Caliva Jasmine five. But when you can compare with Caliva M two-two, which is California, used to be California sushi rice, Calivas, and you see a disease symptoms is completely different. Again, you can see consistently RR IG O one O two and is most aggressive and causes most disease symptoms in comparison with RR O one twenty-nine. Again, control is just agros plot without pathogens. So now we conclude Jasmine five rice has some resistance genes against this fungal pathogens. So later on, we continue rely on Pratipasane's methods. We knew was able to help us to looking for the gene expressions using the Sage. Sage has been quite a few years old now, zero, zero analysis gene expressions. And then we did a DNA microarray. So we're able to compare two, two different platform and gene expression using DNA microarray and Sage. What we found out, quite a few different genes expressed and were detected by two platform and the induction suppression consistent, except for the induction is different. And later on, relay, relates here, I think, when she studied the interaction with resucitronia potato, and then we did a comparative contrast, some differential expressed genes between rice and resucitronia and also potato resucitronia systems. And that was twenty eleven. So our scientist, Shannon Penson, went to Bangor, they actually found a plant breeder there using a coke bottle for evaluating shisplite resistant. So I, we had to improve this message and utilize these techniques to develop relative high throughput evaluation. The message is pretty simple. You, you just, you remove bottle of, used to coke bottle and you inoculate, yeah, shisplite in PDA, PDA plugs on the bottom of seedlings. And you cover it for three to seven days in a greenhouse. And this message allow us to really detect their different differential response over germ plasms if they connect a different, different geographic area. And in contrast, your field, field experiment, you can see here, it's just a massive field evaluation each week, we have a good air to looking one by one. So with this message, we're allowing you to do this twelve months a year and all the time, essentially have a greenhouse will be, help you rapidly screening the resistant germ plasms. And with this message, we're able to mapping a few QTLs using a mapping population we developed with Jasmine five. As I said earlier, this variety contains resistance resources. And what I want, pointed to you is on the chromosome nine, bottom chromosome nine is a major QTL, we call it QTL, QSB nine dash two, provides about eighteen percent, uh, no, so the twenty-three point eight percent phenotypic variations, and that is the major QTLs. And later on, we are able to verify this major QTL using three years replicate phenotyping in three states, Louisiana, Arkansas, and Texas. So this demonstrates the phenotyping by the coke bottle is useful for mapping the shisplite resistant QTL. And during this efforts, we're able to identify a few lines, a few germ plasms, they contains a significant resistance to shisplite, but also resistant blast. We release them as germ plasms a few years ago. So as I said earlier, we're using the detachment of assays developed by Pratipa. We, Pratipa construct first suppression subtracting CDN library. We're able to rapidly sequence a few differential expressed genes. The time we, we prepared this, this graphic and we found a quality fuse unknown level genes. And now this, we know there's quite a few of these gene is known now because resucitronia isolates, resucitronia passing cause soybean disease has been sequenced. So from this candidate genes, we've been looking at, we only focus a few of them. One of them I want to bring to your attention, which we'll spend time to follow up, is ABC Transporter. Now, the reason we want to follow up ABC Transporter is because they also found it on the bottom chromosome nine where our major QTL is located. And so we look at this ABC Transporter, we want to answer, address whether this genes induced by inoculated with shisplite, passaging also has any gene expression with different strains of rice blast fungus. Turned out, turned out, and those gene are not differentially expressed under Megaloposa inoculation. So we think this ABC Transporter found on chromosome nine, something specific for shisplite So currently, we sequence the ABC Transporter of this mapping population parents, Neymar and Jasmine five. We identify quite a few SMPs. And but the challenge now is to really looking at the phenotypic variation of recombinant breeding lines we have and coordinate with the DNA differences. In order to do so, now we have to develop a backcross populations and produce massive number of seeds for continued phenotypic evaluation, both in a greenhouse and in a field. And very recently, a few months ago, we, we, we say, we want, we want to see whether we can artificially create massive disease symptoms of rice plants by inoculate the plants using the toothpick and growing with many fungal mycelians use toothpick in a later, later stage in a greenhouse, then providing eighty, above eighty percent humidities so that we create equal opportunity for all the plants to have disease symptoms. Then we hope we can repeatedly measure the recombinant breeding lines, backcross lines to really identify the many genetic differences. And sometime, we did a germ plasm survey, well, USDA, we have twenty thousand germ plasm, germ plasm connect from over hundred countries. We are able to identify about fifty, sixty lines resistant to shisplite, using coke bottle methods I showed you earlier. Now we run into a field for two years, field experiment, about sixty plants, fifty-two plants were verified, they are indeed resistant. And again, this is suggesting that coke bottle methods could also be used for their germ plasm screening in addition to QTL mapping. This is just a few slides show you, and again, one appreciate the high through phenotyping efforts is because shisplite evaluation is really labor, labor consuming, this is very challenging and it's, you know, here just show you inoculation time. And after that, as you feel, you go there looking for the reaction based on visual, visual observations. And as matter of fact, I'm gonna have a sixteen base power, the same size of field, football field to be evaluated in next three weeks. So I want to tell you, this is an important effort, we're continuing to working on, but it's not, we don't know anything, we, we know that the methods we develop, particularly in coke bottle message, and everybody can get a coke bottle. The coke bottle I have, I ask donations, every employee have coke bottle bring me. So I just cut the bottles and it's, it's nice. It can be used for rapid screening for resistant to shisplite and not only for germ plasm screening, but also for QTL mapping. And forty-nine germ plasms we identified, some of them has adopted Southern United States, can be used for US breeder to use, and others could be for breeders in the other part of world to use for improved shisplite resistance. And we're continuing to determine genetic markers, particular SMPs from ABC Transporter, identify one or two of them, which most likely relate with shisplite resistance for marker-assisted breedings in the future. So with that, I'd like to close my presentation and thanks for all high school students and visiting scientists and lab members, they are all the team, member of a hardworking team. Without them, we have to have drawn all their high throughput machine, which is not available for shisplite yet. Thank you.
Julian, that major QTL that you found, is it repeatable across different populations with different parentage and across environment?
And we are trying to determine that, yes. We hope that is the case, yeah. That's the next steps. We're hopeful. We can bet the money there, maybe next half year's time. Thank you.
Really impressive session, and I'm like looking forward to not looking at every plant to phenotype it sometime in the future. But today, I'm gonna talk about some work we've been doing in lab over the last five or six years. I want to thank Jose Zambro is the graduate student who did most of the phenotyping and the genotypic analysis on what I'm gonna talk about. Mark Jones developed all the populations and is really our go-to guy for germ plasm development. David Francis co-advised Jose with me. Adriana Thomas from Pioneer was the one who helped us get our populations genotyped by Pioneer, which was really nice. All of us are standing on the shoulders of some people that are now retired from their current position, or from the positions they had. But they're the people who really developed the protocols that we use to phenotype virus resistance in maize. And especially Ray Louis, who developed most of the protocols that we currently use in the laboratory. John Nook and Bob Anderson developed the insect transmission stuff. And Snip Paddockey and his technician Mark Meyer developed the backpack sprayer that I'll tell you about. So maize is a little bit different than some of the crops that you all have been talking about before today because the most maize is, breeding is done by private companies in the United States. So we don't really focus on breeding, we focus more on genetics and identifying QTL and markers that are associated with resistance. And because of that, we don't worry about being, having very adaptive materials. And I think this is a little different approach because we can skew things more in our favor. Okay. So this map was developed from over twenty-five years of research by, by a number of different groups around the world, using a very diverse set of maize germ plasm. And what you can see is that there are, I'm so not a PC person. There's like three major lumps of major resistance genes and QTLs in the maize genome that provide resistance to a number of different viruses. But like I said, this has been done in different populations at different times, in different places. And so a number of years ago, Ray and Mark actually ident, developed an inbred line from a single plant that they got from an open pollinated variety from the Virgin Islands that haven't developed no symptoms when it was inoculated with maize chlorotic dwarf virus. And they were really looking for a strong source of resistance to that virus at the time. Well, over the years, we have found out that this inbred line is resistant to at least ten viruses in six unrelated virus families. That is, they are positive sense RNA viruses, negative sense RNA viruses, persistently transmitted, non-p persistently transmitted. And so we're very interested in what's going on because this gives you a chance to look at all of that virus resistance in one place, right? And one thing that students frequently ask me is like, well, wow, shouldn't we just use this line for, you know, to, to make all hybrids? And well, all is not rosy. It's not resistant to every virus we've tried, it's not resistant to Fiji viruses, which are important in Asia, or maize streak virus, which is important in Africa. It's also twelve feet tall, wants to flower in September and is extremely susceptible to smut, so it's not everything. Okay. So originally, we looked at MCDV resistance in a F2 population with inbred line called VA thirty-five. And we found a couple of, we found major QTL on chromosomes three and ten, same places where those big lumps are. But we want, since we wanted to look more broadly at virus resistance, we developed an immortal, mortal population, recombinant population, using what we call our universal susceptible line. OH twenty-eight has never met a virus it didn't like. So we have twenty, two hundred fifty-six reels in this population from the cross of OH one VI by OH twenty-eight. And they were genotyped at Pioneer in collaboration with Adriana Thomas and Kevin Simcox. And ultimately, we had twenty, two hundred sixty polymorphic marker and ten linkage groups. And so you get a linkage map, all right? But this works for, we can use this population to map any trait that's segregating now, right? So it's all about phenotyping. And really, in, in maize, what I'm worried about is getting the virus into the plant to do my phenotyping. All right? I want something that's high efficiency with so few escapes. We are looking for greater than ninety-five percent infection of our susceptible controls. Mark Jones is looking for a hundred percent in my lab. We want it to be fairly high throughput. We need an ability to inoculate many plants with not very much labor because we don't have very much money. We need good consistency, we need to be reproducible across reps and experiments. We need to be able to easily identify a failed experiment. If we didn't get good transmission, we need to know it fast before we spend a lot of time analyzing experiment, we're not gonna get results. And for us, because we look at viruses from around the world, we need to have phenotyping or inoculation protocols that fit the constraints of our AFIS permits. And for, for us, that means that we can't do it outside. We can only be in the greenhouse in the winter when there's no maize in the field. And so we have to do an awful lot of things in growth chambers. So as I was thinking about this, how do we decide what protocol we're gonna use? So we need to consider inoculum volume sometimes because sometimes we just don't have that many infected plants, right? That having enough infected plants to make inoculum is difficult. For us, we really like to be able to do multiple inoculations. And this is because that drives that infection in the susceptible controls up. If we can do three inoculations, even four inoculations, we can always get a hundred percent infection of our susceptible controls. How much labor it requires, time is money, how many people, what kind of skill level do they need to do the inoculations? And disease nurseries are great, but they're almost never outside your door. And so you have to consider travel to get to your nurseries. High throughput, these are things other people have mentioned, and, and so just so it makes you understand how important they are. But for us, more plants, more reps, more experiments give us more power and better consistency. And better consistency leads to fewer experiments, and it's a little bit circular, but, and then containment, we have to abide by our permit conditions. So natural disease nurseries are great and were used a lot by my predecessors to do all of the early work on that, that was done on virus resistance. And in this particular case, this is the most amazing nursery in Asia, they had, they did have like ninety percent infection of their susceptible controls with maize rufthorn virus. It was amazing. But I've never seen anything like that anywhere else. And so the efficiency, and when I'm going through these, if they're marked in yellow, that's something that's a flag to me as maybe not being optimal. Doesn't require much inoculum, but we can't do multiple inoculations, so frequently incidence is low. It require a fair amount of labor because you have to get back and forth to the field. You don't need any real equipment. You can, throughput's high, but consistency is poor. And so this is where we need to know when we can throw away an experiment, when we did not get a high enough incidence of disease to, to make any real decisions about what's going on with resistance. One of the things my lab can do very well is vector inoculations. And they require a lot of skill on, we have somebody who's an entomologist, who can maintain all of these vectors, get populations of the vectors high enough to do the experiments that we need to do. One of the things that Bob Anderson found was that we could, we could and should do multiple inoculations with the vectors, and we do them starting when the plants are about this high. So if I have five hundred plants, I'll put five hundred viriliferous vectors in the cage with them. And then two days later, I'll do the same thing, two days later, I'll do the same thing. And that gives us the hundred percent infection that we need. The, the throughput on this is pretty okay in the lab. We can manage maybe five hundred plants in a single experiment. And consistency is very good in the lab and, and we can do containment. A lot of people do use vector assisted, shall we say, virus inoculations in the field. Laney and Jesse's experiment was exactly that, right? That a disease nursery where they had insects coming in and then they excluded them from the control plots. The people who've done maize streak usually raise the leafhoppers, make them, feed them on infected plants, and then they move them out into the field and drop them into the whirls of the maize in order to increase their transmission rates. This is the way we could do the most plants for us, mechanical inoculations in the field. However, we can only do it with viruses that are present in Ohio. Okay? And so we have three ways we've done this that have been developed over the years. This is a solemn, solid stream, and it actually squirts a stream, like a high-pressure stream of inoculum across the, the plants as it goes, as the tractor drives down the field and then recovers that inoculum so it can spray it again. The airbrush involves two people sitting behind a tractor on a special rig and reaching down and inoculating every plant with an airbrush. This is what they did when I first started. We did a lot when I first started at Worcester, at Ohio State. We've all gotten twenty years older and it's really just too hard for us to do anymore. So now we've adapted the protocol that Snip Paddockey and, and Mike Meyer developed using a backpack sprayer. And this is pretty cool because you just load up the backpack sprayer with ground-up virus inoculum and you walk through the field spraying the plants. It takes, I don't know, twenty minutes to do an acre. It has, so it has the advantage that we can, we can get through all of these. We can do large, large, pretty good acreage, acres. We're, we're only doing genetics, not breeding. We can do multiple inoculations. The backpack sprayer and the solid stream take fair amount of inoculum. So that takes some preparation and, and facilities to do that. The airbrush doesn't, it, it just take maybe a liter of inoculum, you can do two or three acres. All of them give us reasonable throughput, very good consistency, but we have no containment. Mechanical inoculation, we use in the growth chamber in the greenhouse. This doesn't work for every virus, right? So some of the viruses, we must use insects. Leaf rub inoculation, which is the indoor equivalent of the airbrush. And then vascular puncture inoculation, I lied a little bit, this is mechanical. And it was developed by Ray Louis, but we have been able to transmit every virus that we know should infect maize, even if it's usually obligately transmitted by an insect. We can transmit it using this technique. And what we do, you can see, this is John Apt here, and he's holding a jeweler's engraving tool. And what he was doing is, you can see, this is a little pitchfork here with five little minutum pins, those pins that you use to mount a bug, if you're an entomologist. And drive, drives those pins through that little droplet, that little green drop, which is virus inoculum, down, if this is the embryo on the cornseed, like down behind it. there's a vascular bundle that runs underneath the embryo. And we've been able to generate, to infect plants with every virus that we know should infect maize that way. This is the newer version, which is a little updated because you use a video camera to aim and press a button and the pins go through. It's still arced, like Ray Louis is really good at it and I'm really bad at it, so. So back to our populations. So what did we do? So we used, we looked at three podiviruses in the field, in the greenhouse, two viruses in the Rabdoviridae, Rabdoviruses. Maize mosaic is the one that causes a lot of disease around in the tropics. Maize fine streak virus is another virus, doesn't cause much disease, but it's a good pair for comparison for us. Repeating the Maize chlorotic dwarf virus in this different population. Maize rhodophino causes a lot of problems in South America. And then Maize necrotic streak is a tombus virus, another in the lab rat family, doesn't cause much disease. And Maize chlorotic model virus, which is causing a lot of problems these days. So we use several different ways to inoculate in the field, vectors in the greenhouse. Many of them, we could do multiple inoculations. And we always get more than 90, or usually got more than 90% infection of the susceptible controls, except for the one we did by VPI. And that's the hard part about that particular technique. Okay, so disease rating and experimental design. So our disease rating is pretty straightforward, normal for viruses. For almost every case that we know, if a plant is susceptible, it will, and it's infected, it will have symptoms. So we don't have to do any special techniques to make sure that the plants are infected or not. And so we rated symptoms in everything. Some of the viruses are more, have genes with dominant genes. And this we expected with the podiviruses. Many have a more quantitative response in the population. Various segregation models, some are one gene, some are two genes. Some have epistasis, some don't. And what did we find? Okay, and this is a little bit different kind of a map. You're used to looking at individual chromosomes. On this map, each chromosome goes around the outside, okay? And then each ring represents a separate virus. And the take-home message here is that we're seeing those same clusters in this single genotype that we saw across all of the varied genotypes that have been tested in the past with major clusters for resistance on chromosome 10. You can see six different viruses have a resistance gene right in the same place. Chromosome 3, we have one, two, this one is actually a resistance locus there, four, five. The same with locus on chromosome 10. And then for the Rabdoviruses, we also see locus on chromosome 2. Many of these are loci that we knew of before, some are new. We had never looked at resistance to Maize rhodophino, Maize necrotic streak, or Maize fine streak, which is this one. And the Rabdovirus loci had not been seen before in other populations. More recently, we looked at MCMV because we found out that recombinant inbred, some recombinant inbred lines from this population had done very well in screening against MLN, excuse me, Maize lethal necrosis in East Africa. And yes, indeed, we find the same thing. So in those same places on that ring map, we have loci on chromosome 2, 3, and 10 for O H, for Maize chlorotic model virus in this population. So this is, to me, this is really cool because this is like a great mine for future studies. So with composite interval mapping, we identified 24 resistance QTLs to nine different viruses. They were clustered on the same, in the same locations that people had found over the years in a lot of diverse germplasm. So we found new QTLs for MMV, Maize fine streak, and Maize rhodophino. And so this gives us a really nice system for beginning to pull apart pleiotropic resistance to viruses in maize. And I just wanted to end with a picture of the ultimate virus phenotyping site. This is the Maize lethal necrosis screening facility in Nivasha, Kenya. It's operated by CIMIT and Kenya Agriculture Livestock Research Organization. And it was funded by Gates Foundation and Syngenta Foundation. And they screen, they'll screen lines for anybody who's developing germplasm and trying to see, evaluate for resistance to MLN. They inoc, right now, they're inoculating with both viruses that are involved in the disease, MCMV and SCMV, under extremely high disease pressure. I have to say, when I first went out there, and this was the first time I saw it, this is a 30, a 20 hectare facility, so it's huge. And it's filled with corn plants and they are all dead. And since I'm a plant pathologist, I was like, whoa, cool. But you could see, like on all this sea of dead plants, you'd see one row that was doing okay. And so they're screening under very high disease pressure and it's really cool. They are using the backpack sprayer method that was developed by Snook. And so I will end there and thank you for your attention.
Do we have any questions?
Even though you are not involved in, in breeding per se, but you are identifying good, I mean, super sources of resistance, how are those distributed to the community of the soybean use, I mean, the corn users? The companies or the different places?
So the US companies don't have, care very much about our germplasm. But we have been working really hard to get germplasm that we've characterized over to East Africa, South America. It is kind of a trip because I just have one today, so that phytosanitary certificate that wants me to screen it for MCMV before I send it. And it's like, I can't do that. You know, because I, there's no MCMV in Ohio, so I can't really screen it for... But we send it out as freely as we can. And we're going to release this population, the whole population, in the fall.
Good afternoon. I was wondering if you could elaborate between doing, about doing high-throughput experiment in challenging areas, I mean, funding and equipment challenging areas like Africa versus the US, so.
So I, I think that we've been very lucky in East Africa because the two big foundations stepped up and put this very expensive facility in. It's in an area where there's not a lot of maize. There is a rhino-proof fence that goes around it, makes me feel happy. And it has to be irrigated, but they can do four sets of screenings a year because it is. It's much more difficult for my colleagues, say, in Tanzania or Rwanda, to do screening. And they, they have a hard time, how can I say, getting the virus isolates to work well for them, like keeping the virus isolate separate and knowing that it's what they want so that they can do inoculations. Mostly, they're using natural infection, using disease nurseries. That's a little dicey because they tend to call every dead plant, every dead plant was infected with MLN, and that's not always true.
I have a quick question about your methods for field inoculations.
Sure.
Sorry, I'm in the dark over here. Do you use carburettum with the backpack sprayers?
Yeah, we do.
Have you tried it without carburettum?
That's a good question and we should.
I had the same question.
Okay.
All right, so may I replace her to introduce our last speaker for this symposium? Yungpin Du. Yungpin has been a friend of mine and also colleague. We are both working for USDA ARS. Yungpin is known to passive ID their Huanglongbi. Now today, he's going to share some of his new genetic, new markers for phenotyping and also some mechanism he just understood recently. I hope you guys continue to stay and enjoy his last, most exciting talk. Welcome.
Thank you for the introduction. Previous speaker all talking about the resistant gene from the genotype to the phenotype. But we are dealing with citrus, no resistance. What are we going to do? I'm 60. I try, I got the genome sequence. In eight years, I couldn't get a culture. I got the most beautiful antibiotics can cure the disease, but regulatory not allow us to use. And the disease decline and the industry is dying. So you see, probably many of you are fresh-faced, so you may not exposed to the HOB. But anyway, it's devastating to the citrus industry. It caused $80 billion since 2006. And the yield is reduced to, back to 1945, 1950. And we are in the brink of collapse of this whole industry. So what can we do about this? First, from, I'm a bacteriologist. So as a bacteriologist, I want to understand what's in the disease complex, why we see these complex symptoms, and what we want to understand what the factor contribute the symptoms. We have the pathogen, we have phyto, phyto biome, and we have the environmental factors and the host factors. How we connect all these dots together, allow us to identify the phenotype, allow us to identify tolerance of resistant plants. And that's my goal. So we're way, based on the last 10 years working in greenhouse in the field, so I come up with a way how we select two different type of resistance, one from the seedling and one from the basball. We know in the citrus breeding program, 95 variety come from the basball. Because from the seedling to the mature, it take 10 to 12 years. How many 10 or 12 years in our career allow us to breeding a resistant variety? So what I think is, in my rest of career, I should have a novel idea to get something maybe useful. So that's what the basis from there. And from our previous working experience, you guys probably know about, if you attend other seminar, citrus screening has a all different type phenotype. But one of them is the characteristic symptom is... The yellow shoot and the branch model. And in the late stage, you see the decline and some of them will die. However, what we know the complex is, even inside the greenhouse with limited environmental condition, which will be pre-uniform, but you'll see very different phenotype. See one single shoot, you see two leaves show typical symptom, they're yellow, and the other looks healthy. And from the other branch, you see the typical yellow shoot. And then you have this ventriloquy and mosaic-like symptoms. And we also have this live branch model. That's the one I always looking for. Live branch model always associated with tolerance. So based on my observation on the field in the greenhouse, while we looking for this different phenotype. When we see the phenotype, you see this yellow shoot. You know the plant is not going to grow, no matter how you give any nutrition. They are sitting there, they will not recover. Only some sort of resistance present in that plant, they may recover. But we do see some of the other plant which got infected and less symptoms. And we detect all these plant, they have either similar phenotype or a similar bacteria title, but with very different phenotype. The one most dramatic symptom is the small leaf and yellow shoot. When you see that one, you know this plant is not going anywhere and is susceptible. But we also see some of these different type branch model. The degree of yellowing on this branch model is the determinant how we judge if it's susceptible or tolerant. We also look, another phenotype, which is small leaf, but remain green. When you see this phenotype, we always see new flesh can come out, grow out from that small leaf shoots. And we also see, I will talk about later, we also see the fruit setting on that small leaf. And we also can find out some association, something associated with this small leaf. So that's what we are trying to looking into it. So you see this different phenotype, some of them asymptomatic, and but they contain high bacteria title. So what we looking for is the one have less symptom, but do tolerate enough the bacteria multiply. So based on this symptom, we classify into four phenotypes. From the small leaf yellow to the asymptomatic. The same thing on the grapefruit. If you know, in the citrus, grapefruit, sweet orange are two major variety we use in the production. Even though in Florida, we also have mandarin and other varieties. So this is the same story. Yellow shoot, it won't grow well. And we divide four different phenotype. And these four phenotype, the most important one is, you have the one, even though you have similar title or you have the infection, you only have very mild yellow in the branch model. And leaf size demand pretty much the normal like leaf. So here is the example, the small leaf get a lot of fruit. Then we go ahead, test these different phenotype. Like this small leaf, the bacteria title is extremely low. However, that tree, the one carried the fruit and the fruit, the seed and the seed core and the central calm, you do have very high content of bacteria title. So why, why this is different? But we do know some of these phenotype, live branch model, is the plant show pretty decent tolerance. And when you see this small leaf yellow, you know the plant is susceptible and will never grow. So when we look at the biomarker, because of a time limitation, all I can talk about is the H2O2. Everybody know H2O2, but the trick is not H2O2. The trick is how we use the detection of the H2O2. While we here, we find out the, the most severe one, you do see H2O2 accumulation. And this H2O2 is variable among different leaf samples. But one thing is for consistent is, we test 30 cycle in the, in the reading. And you always see the healthy plant or tolerant plant, you have starting low H2O2 content and it will increase. So you will see several for increase in the healthy plant or relative tolerant plant. But instead, for the susceptible or highly symptomatic, you will see the H2O2 accumulate. But instead for the susceptible or highly symptomatic, you will see the H2O2 accumulate at early high level and you have a very low for increase. You basically start on the same. So this is an easy way. When we done real-time PCR run, it costs us $5 to run the detection. And this we cost me us less than 10 cents. So at least we can use this technology and we have also using ADP. In combine, we use the leaf disc 96 well play and less than 15 cents and less than 20 minutes, we'll run the screening for the test. So while we talking about the phenotype is very different, what's the mechanism involved? One thing is the strand. Well, here I give you the example, two different strand. And the one with the left side, that strand would know it has from the genome, it lack 8.3 KB deletion. We don't know how they correlate with the disease, but we know this strand is more severe than the normal strand. So you see the mild strand get very low title, but the severe trend has high title. And meanwhile, also you can see the leaf infection versus the root infection. When you have the mild strand, the root infection is very low. And we have another strand, which is only if you know the bacteria, it has two comatose inside the comosome. The two prophase inside the comosome, sometimes they jump out, we'll call phage. But in this strand, we only have one. So from this one, this strand because of is more severe. So you always causing the symptom, either the moderate trees causing the death and you also inoculation, you never see branch model, you only see the yellow shoot. So this is the one from the bacteria genotype. Another one, we know the another phage, which is recombinant of A and B, one and two, we call D. And this D is not present in the city, but always detect associated with branch model. So we believe this D is associated with the symptom development. So that's why we are going now try to figure out what's the gene in the D, how they associate the disease development. In addition to the bacteria per se, we also found another unknown pathogen. It could be virus, it could be bacteria, but this guy is transmitted by C transmission. So far, we haven't identified what pathogens. But we know when we have this guy present with H O B, it does suppress the bacteria title and suppress the symptoms. So what we want to figure out, what's this guy is virus? Because this one only express in relative low temperature, when we go to high temperature, it disappear. However, it's different from virus, it never show in the younger leaf, it's only show in the mature leaf. So this is the pathogen so far unknown. And meanwhile, you also see the water soaking like phenotype. So that's what the new disease we need to figure out. And this disease only show the symptom in one genotype of citrus. When we graph to any other genotype, there's no symptoms. So that's a unique phyto biome for us to figure out how they associate with H O B. And from the microscope, and you can see the liver vector is that this long shell bacteria. But we also see some of them with short large cells and some of them really looks like virus particle. What's going on within this inside the form? So are they any other microorganism associated with H O B causing liver vector? Because we cannot culture the post. Sorry, we haven't confirmed the cause posture yet. So all other possibility involve at least the complex, which allow us to really figure out. And we do have a hypothesis, because the bacteria is in the population. We publish paper based on the phase sequence. We find nine different phenotype, nine different genotype of large bacteria. So what our hypothesis is when you have this selection in the host, the population after the host selection, you will yield different strand and different cells. And we do sequence 35 different isolate of this large bacteria. And a major change is within the prophase phage. We do have a lot about over 10,000 snip change among these 35 isolates. And we're talking about some of this isolate, we are able to call associated with biology. And the other, we just get the sequence. So the other part, we're talking about the molecular mechanism from the host standpoint. We compare these relative susceptible and relative tolerant variety. They are both grapefruit and they are close, very closely related grapefruit. So from the transcriptome assay, because of time, you are in, if you are interested, you can look at our publication in Frontier in Plant Science. And here you can see some of the gene, especially the NPR gene is the red one is up regulate. And the green one is down regulate. So from our standpoint, we are not necessarily looking for resistant gene. We are actually, it will be more interest for us to looking for the susceptible gene. When we find the susceptible gene, we may go in using genome editing to knock down that gene and hope in that way will increase the resistance. So this is what we are really interested about is the D M, D M R six like gene, which is down regulate and which has been demonstrated in a lot of species and other crops. So our next target will try to knock out this gene and see if this is associated with the better tolerance. So it's back to this Dunkin phenotype. We also find out the effector gene, one of the effector gene, which is really up regulate in a small leaf, but only little regulation on the I hope I don't make it wrong. Small leaf you see and two, both of them are really highly expressed. But in a regular leaf, you normally you only see the small increase. So that means that from the bacteria standpoint, we also see the gene expression in a different level. From host aspect, we do see this that gene relate to the leaf size. And you see the normal leaf has large down regulation, small leaf also have regulation, down regulation. And another part, we do know one of this effect target to chlopros. So we make transgenic plant and you see this yellow shoot. This is natural infection and this is a transgenic plant express that protein. And you see that leaf and this yellow always associated with higher expression of this effector gene. And when we look at the chlopros, when you have this GFP co-express with this gene, you see the chlopros is all die or decline. We, another thing we are mentioning about is the repeating, which we now call last A1. This one, we know it target mitochondria. And we are interested about using this gene because this gene it has nearly identical repeat. And we can use this repeat about real-time PCR. And from here, this paper published in 2012. And we know this increase almost 700 for increase in terms of sensitivity. Now, since we are talking the phage, the problem is the phage number always change. So we are not always get consistent data for the quantitativity. However, we can use this phage target and the 16th as target. And we can use, use this to measure the phage dynamic and how they associate with phenotype. We're talking about, for example, one of these transgenic plant, we express this gene. And we know they are going to the mitochondria. And when we express this plant and actually it suppress the symptom. And one of the typical symptoms is this trend R5 T4, we never see branch model in other, in fact, nature in fact plant. However, we do see this much branch model in this transgenic plant. So we believe this gene have something to do with this phenotype suppression. And what's the detailed mechanism we need to follow study? So now back to the real story, how we select the potential citrus mutant or variant plant. So in my research, we always see when we do the inoculation, we see some plant, we know it got infection. We know it got low title, but you don't see the severe symptom. And some of them, you see the branch model on the bottom is very slowly move up. It's not the typical way when you get infection, you see the yellow on the top. So what we think about, maybe this is the difference individual in response to the infection. So we go ahead evaluate this, because this is actually another story. We believe individual citrus plant from the ceiling will be not the same as what we normally using graft cutting. When you use graft cutting, the sound, the genetic background are pretty same. But when you go through the ceiling, you have a chance to see different variation among individuals. So this is paper we publish using FRAT 22 of Zandoumona citri. You use that way, we can select different individual with different loss. Some of them with much higher loss, some of them with lower loss. And we challenge with canker, you can see individual plant with higher loss have better canker. You have lower loss, you have less canker. So that's the concept allow us to go for the H O B. So when we do the inoculation on the Dunkin, Dunkin is the most susceptible plant. And Dunkin, we normally will get 95 or 100% infection. However, we always see couple plant or two or three plant, which is do not show the typical symptoms. And we, because we do the chemical evaluation, we inoculate thousands of plants. And from that Dunkin plant, we see some of these plant are better. You know the inoculation, the sign the bacteria is there, you detect this recipient plant, we can get low title detection. But this guy never get high title on the recipient. And we challenge different strength, still resistant. We go ahead, graft this, cut this and graft to different root star. And you see after inoculation, you show there different response. And also another phenomenon we observe, this resistant plant also most susceptible to one of our pesticide to the insect. That pesticide caused the drop of the leaf. So you see these two plant, they basically lose all the leaf. That's not due to the H O B infection, actually it's due to the sensitivity to the pesticide. And that's actually giving away, I think about this is good sign because it could potential mutant to the, susceptible to the pesticide. And we just got the genome sequence, resequencing of this guy in the transcriptome. And from the genome sequencing, resequencing and transcriptome, we actually identify 15 gene are high, high impact mutation. And we find two gene are really high up regulate and associated with this system. And another thing is in the field, I was losing bed with my colleague with one of these saw orange when the disease hit in Florida forest. And this is the saw orange, by the time I saw, oh, this is problem gemato, you have to, have to detail the bacteria. I losing the bed. This guy actually showed a similar symptom, it's very difficult to detect. So after 10 years, this saw orange still striving, growing well with decent number of bacteria. But the saw orange next, you can see how much decline it. So that's the saw orange, I showed a better resistant to the canker in the previously. So I go ahead propagate these seedlings, we challenge with H O B. And some of them show better resistance than the others. This is the plant we challenge with H O B and the plant we grow out very well, still keep there. So we are using this for future, the propagation of the name. Since we get this evidence, council approved in greenhouse on Dunkin. And luckily enough, two years ago, we have grower come in and tell us they find the ceiling in, they call volunteer ceiling in growth. Because of the practice of citrus, you never allow the ceiling grow in the seat, in the growth. But this is the ceiling, the seed drop to the soil and grow in the growth. And we have almost 300 plant out there. And they pass the germinized stage, they have the fruit. And they, you see that they are growing well, the moderate tree all infect and decline by H O B. And this guy still grown pretty decent plant. And you look at, they do have some infection, but not decline and very limit infection. So we go ahead and evaluate this plant. And grab them, recharge and challenging them. And we see some of the nine is better resistant than the others. And this one, we also have the transcriptome is matched to our better resistant to the Dunkin. So that's what feel good about this, even though this is very preliminary data, but we feel good about this. And this is another group from the same the same cutting from those field volunteer grapefruit. And this is Dunk Red Ruby is commercial variety. And we did a juice quality assay. And they either similar as their mother plant or some of them even better than the mother plant in terms of the juice quality. So that give us opportunity really get these guys to clean up and send after field trial, we could release this as a new varieties. And from the same thing on the bus board, the Dunkin, we have all this infected plant. Majority of them, they are yellow, sitting there, you never see grow. But I do have few plant which come out, couple bud come out and they grow out very well. And that's the bud allow us to think about, hey, this bud may be different from their mother plant. We go ahead propagate them and challenge with disease. And some of them, we do see the difference. Now, what we really like is another commercial variety, how can we go out and looking for the commercial variety and looking for the bus board, which is better resistant or tolerant from the mother plant. So you can see some of this plant in the field, five, six years old, majority of plant infected. And these plants still growing very well. Are they escape or are the due to the phyto biome? But I'm looking for different phenotype. This is the phenotype I'm talking about the small leaf. I believe this small leaf associated with H O B infection, but probably due to the resistant response. So that's why I'm looking for these guys. And then I cut that shoot and get home, propagate them and challenge and evaluate. And so far, I'm looking, looking good, we are still waiting for the data coming. Because the inoculation at least takes six months to one year to really get you a confident data. And that's the, the one we are talking about. Meanwhile, we also have some breeding program, other breeder who do the radiation treatment. You can see how susceptible this is, all the tree are decline. However, we do see couple bus boards which grow out green. And so I go ahead propagate them. And you can see some of them are really as their mother plant show this yellow with high title. But the others, you do have infection, but we are talking about the branch model with very little yellow and the plant continue grow. And this is a few months ago, now the plants grow very big, but they have this high title, almost the same as the other. So we are able to select this relative tolerant bus board compared from their mother plants. And here is other different bus board cutting, some of them are showing the typical symptom. Some of them you get high, low title, low last title. And some of them, you barely get infected. So we do see the same bus board responds differently to, to the H O B infection. Another one is I'm really frustrated by this variety is so good, this pumino. How can I get one out of these guys? So unfortunately, we see one spot which is has typical H O B disease. If by normal people will let it go. But I think this one, you do see the yellow, green, branch model rather than whole yellow. And I go ahead propagate, propagate them. And you can see this is after cure with antibiotics, they grow normally. And the one without cure, and three of them are grow pretty decently. And the other one, even though you have symptom, but they still grow. And this is on the new start of my And this is on the loose star of my saw orange. So what I hoping is, we have some resistance from loose star, some resistance from the cyan. So in combination, we may add better resistant or tolerant for the H O B infection. Before, we may able really join the immune resistant varieties. Similar phenomenon, we do see some on this Valencia. So, and the take home message is about the symptom. The most yellow one is the most severe one. So it doesn't matter the yellow shoe or the yellow on the branch model. And for the selection, the small leaf or the branch model with very mild symptom are the phenotype for us to select better resistance or tolerance. Of course, if you have the one without symptom, that will be the best, the most valuable one. So what we can do and using this biomarker ATP and H two O two assay to evaluate this tolerance. And last one is the ceiling and bus board selection could be an easier approach. And this is our collaborator and, and post on, and visiting scientists, technician working in my lab. And thank you for your attention.
So we have time for a few questions. Let me start the first question. This is remarkable, you, you apparently are looking for nature mutants. Just in the citrus growth, the seeds you dropping there, their parent trees dead and the children actually survived, you think they have genetic resistance?
Right.
So if that is true, this hypothesis is true, have you communicated with scientists worldwide working on citrus? Where Huanglongbing has been a problem for decades? Have they actually identified some true resistant lines? And if so, can you import them?
This is actually have some report. The question is, so how can we select really true resistant line? And you can, by communication with different scientists in different country, some scientists do say, oh, we also see this phenomenon in somewhere, some, something. So what I do is, I suggest them to do the evaluation as what we do. And we actually, we need to do the insect transmission study because this is insect borne disease. So what we really, in the next, next month, I'm going to Brazil for the citrus congress. And I do hope we will spare all this idea and have more people involved. And meanwhile, I also tried to propose NIFA grant next month and hoping get funding for this kind of research. So this is the area, I think, because we don't have a resistant gene identified in citrus genus, what can we do? And we know this is, and in the nature in Florida, we have tens of, a million, tens of millions of tree infect out there. No, no place in the world has such number of infect tree out there. So the natural mutation in the Florida, we have a high disease pressure. That will allow us to select for the better resistant or tolerant bus boards. I do have other very nice picture show the whole tree infect and a very, one nice sports, the, the branch showing asymptomatic. And we go in, detect the bacteria, the tide is very low. So that's the way how we go out and select for.
I take it you haven't resequenced those transcription assays on the variant branches?
Yes, I, I do have resequencing on these Duncan seedlings. And that one identify, I, I get twice inoculation for two years. I cut it out, grab inoculation for one more year. Normally Duncan, you inoculate three months, you probably see ninety percent infection. Six months, you have no doubt, they, if they are susceptible, will show the symptom. And this guy showed a resistant. So we resequencing this one with collaborator, they have the Duncan from the Jim Plaza collection. And we do see that something difference. And meanwhile, we also do the transcripton comparison between the Duncan resistant, Duncan susceptible and the Red Ruby grapefruit from the growth, that resistant and susceptible. And we do see some of gene, is the beauty of this one is when we do the comparison with the Jackson and Marsh, we see hundreds of gene differential express. Now you don't know where to follow with. But with this Duncan, we only find fifteen gene difference. So that will allow us really focus to identify, because this data was generated two weeks ago. So unfortunately, I don't have more detail, detail about this gene, anything related to this resistance. But at least we have this preliminary data, get us feel good about those.
It seems like it's like reminiscent of the virus. You know, where you see with virus infection, you see normal plant shoots coming out of infected plant. Like it's more of a genetic effect, not a genetic difference.
Okay. Could you repeat that question?
He's thinking there, whatever you observe, more likely it's epigenetic events, it's not genetic event. So resisting, you see my lab being hered, is that your question?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, what I am hoping is the, the one, if the genetic variation we identify is associated with the resistance we observe, now we do have this genotype. If not, you could contribute, can attribute them to the phenotype. Phenogenet, gosh, my words cannot come out. Anyway, that's could be the phenomenon you, you mentioned about. Right now, we are only in Florida. It's just happened, we have this, my lab actually involve multiple project. And we screen hundreds of chemical. We now actually recently, we just finished screening of thirty million compound from Tori Pine Library and we got some molecules. We got culturing, we got all this gene expressing and detection strength of different strand. And this is one of the one now get me excited about how can we select something which potential be used in a short time.
Yeah, I think it's important to think about the other question, basically to, you know, to remove the suspense about this, essentially all the stuff. Could it be other factor, like some virus infection or some nutritional impact, some temperature influence on all those things, the microaids be part of this?
I, I agree with you. That's why it's a complex system, you could have so many different factors. What I am looking for is, is the one which is genetics stable and could be transmissible. So that's what we are looking for. And I feel good about these Duncan plants because in the, in the genotype and grapefruit from the, from the field, because they do show the difference, not only. Actually, what we know is not just epigenetics, what we observe. And we see in the gene level and you see some of those are difference. I have couple gene I'm really get excited about is, we know that gene, because this citrus is a hybrid. And somebody's gene you inherit from one of the sweet orange parent or the pumino parent. And the one with sweet orange parent is the one associated with high up regulation and associated with resistance. So yes, all these are so preliminary data. But we are going after these guys and see how this gene are difference, how they express difference. We do see the deletion insertion among these guys. We also see snips, we see over ten thousand snips between this Duncan wild type in the, in the mutant. So if you go those ten thousands, now you are get puzzled which one is really the one associated with what you are looking for the phenotype. So anyway, this is what we try to do. And I feel good about that because those plant in the field, the seed drop in the soil, they have to all compete with the mother plant from the soil nematodes, soil fungi's grow out last ten years for the H O B selection pressure. So they can grow out better out there compared to their mother plant. They definitely have this selection advantage and they fit to our observation on the Duncan. So that's why we are feel of good about this. Red Ruby volunteer seeding in the growth. And we evaluate, it's not all three hundred of them are resistant. We select all these three hundred, we actually evaluate about one hundred. And we get three or five, nine of them are better than all the others. So that is the range what we are observing.
Our question for you, can you import citrus material from foreign country?
Yes, but need a permission.
So you can do that?
Yeah, yeah, we have our California Jim Plaza. They do have all these different Jim Plaza import from different country of the world.
Has any country reported resisting to Huanglongbing?
So far, none. That's what difficult. Maybe I'm in a crazy dream in my age sixty. So I hope by the time I retire, I have something which makes some contribution in the field of this breeding program. I mean, I'm plant physiology training. I could do that, do run in PCR and try to figure all this gene, bacteria gene how it causing the disease, but we cannot solve the problem. If the industry die, we will have no funding and we will probably switch to other research program. So that's what we are talking about.
All right, thank you. I, I believe you'll succeed because by then we'll have long GMO citrus juice. Otherwise, we have choose GMO citrus juice or apple juice. All right, thank you, thank every speakers and thank you particularly stay to the end for this symposium. And I hope you learned and I learned a great deals and I'll see you next APS meeting. Thank you.